Dawn, may I have a pen off of that desk, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, those might help.
Oh.
They look like they're special ones. You know, put them in a container that people steal.
Alright, I'll call the meeting to order, February 4th, 2019, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners. The flag's gone. There's a little one over there. Would you like to join me in the pledge allegiance?
Oh, I'm assuming that that's...
There's a little one right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Respondents? Yeah, thank you. We have from Cummins, from Lincoln Park Manor. I assume this is the generator. I think this would be our first bill from them for their maintenance contract that we signed. We signed a three-year maintenance contract with them to do, what is it, the checks? I don't know what they're called.
Inspection check on them.
Yeah.
Cummings, is that's what that is, a Cummings Diesel Motor?
Yep.
So I guess we have pre-approved that because that's part of the contract that we signed with them. He did guarantee us two years at the same price, and I think he had calculated a little bit of an increase for the third year, but we signed a three-year contract starting this year. And then this is from Phoenix Supply for Lincoln Park Manor, a shower kit.
I think that that is a shower bar setup.
Okay.
One of the residents grabbed the existing plastic one.
Okay, so like the surround...
This is more of a grab bar style.
Two hundred seventy-two dollars, fifty-four cents. This is newsletter from Lincoln, or excuse me, to Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. It's North Central Regional Planning Commission. This one's mine, yours and yours. And we have web fund approved applications. And I was at this meeting, so if anyone has any questions, I can, I can answer. But I'm gonna set those down for the, for the moment, and we can look at the minutes from last two meetings. We had a special meeting, not a special meeting, end of month meeting on January 31st, and prior to that was the Monday meeting on January 28th. Did anyone have anything they'd like to address in the minutes, or I would entertain a motion to approve? I really don't see anything in particular that needs to be changed.
The only thing that I got to thinking about when I was doing the minutes, and this is maybe more so for previous minutes, but if somebody's present on the telephone as a visitor, should they be listed as a visitor? I put them in this time, but I don't think I have in the past, so... Because like your attorney, Eric Oddie and Charles Hay, I don't think I've put them down in the past.
I think you did, because it said in, in the previous, in the previous sessions, it would say for discussion with Attorney Hay, or, and that's because they were on the phone. They've never been here.
I just don't think I've ever put them up with them.
Oh, I don't think that's necessary.
So I did this time as I was doing it, but I, I just don't know if I should or not.
Actually, I've had requests in the past to not have a visitor list, but that's just, because if they're not on the agenda, I mean, that's actually probably more appropriate that they were scheduled to meet with us as opposed to just coming to spectate the meeting. I don't know. How do you feel about that? I've actually had people request not to keep a tally or a list of those who attend the commissary unless they're here to address us.
I see no wrong including them in the minutes, if they were here.
Have you done that for all the years you've been clerk?
I have, but Doris did, and I think Pixel Turb did, I think we always have. I've asked other counties, and almost all of them do.
Well, we can discuss that again if it comes up. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 28th and January 31st.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 28th and January 31st, 2019.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve minutes from both meetings. I would like to say under the discussion disclosure that for the January 31st meeting where we did our accounts payable and our payroll processing, we did discuss that we received the resignation of our newest hire, which would have been the Human Resource Officer. So she is no longer with us, and that is included in the minutes for that meeting. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
On the January 22nd minutes, when we did the council on aging, I think we got one name wrong. I think it should have been Judy Olvers instead of Charlene Watson. Charlene is in the middle of a term, the way the stuff looks.
Yes.
These would be going off in 2020. They'd be Nancy. Would be Judy Olvers, Nancy Natch, and Robert Lovelace. So Charlene Watson was included in that instead of Judy Olvers. Probably need to make that correction.
Do you want to just correct the minutes, or do you want to make a new motion, or...
I think we need a new motion.
I'm assuming that the person who's saying it's good.
I will move again, as I did for Judy Olvers, Nancy Natch, and Robert Lovelace, with terms to expire on December 31st of 2020.
I'll second.
Can I make a comment? How did I end up with an extra year? I didn't. You came on in November of 2016, and that doesn't count then as a full year.
Yeah, you, you replaced somebody. You fulfilled a term.
So all of 2017, surprise, and all of 2018.
And then you gave me a letter for 2018 and 2019 that it expired December 31st, 2019.
Well, I...
I didn't, don't have my papers here, so I...
I don't.
That's what they gave us, is that she expired December 31st, 2019.
And I did not end up with a letter to extend it 2020.
You automatically could have.
That Charlene Watson did.
Yes.
Those are the ones that they told us.
The minutes reflect, and I've got the minutes from those meetings.
Okay, so I'm a bit confused. Could you, are, are you willing to serve a second term? And does that mean it would be all of 19 and 20? Is that what, or you're saying you're here because you don't want to serve that second term?
I'm here for the budget. I just came early in case you're pushing it.
Judy, I guess I would, I would say to you, if you want it ended 19, I would just hand in a resignation for your term, so we keep the terms in, in sequence. So, you know, if you don't want to serve this extra year, that next...
And who's going off, okay, it's to be staggered.
Yeah, it will be...
Who's going off in 19?
Charlene.
Watson and Schneider.
March. But she can apply for a second term.
And then the one that just ended was Jam Dowlin.
You know, Kathy Moss, or...
No, Kathy Moss will be...
She's just coming on, so...
It does seem like we're approving quite a few for 19 and 20. It's not even. We're not evenly...
The reason was is because people made an error, or wherever the error was.
It's because the commission had not been approving the members. And then when they started approving members, they approved all of them at the same time who were already in term or starting term. That was a few years ago.
So they're reducing it to three people to approve.
And they're taking some off, yeah.
Here, it didn't get typed up. It was to be whoever was appointed and sitting on the board finishes theirs, and then we go to the bonus seven people. Okay, whatever, whatever makes you happy.
Would you mind if we continue this discussion, since I have someone on the agenda? And we'll just talk to you about that when you bring the budget? Okay, Greg, if you're ready.
Yep.
Try to keep us a little closer to timeframe this week.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sorry.
All right, I invited Jonathan Shale to be here. Obviously, he's not gonna make it. First off, most of you probably already know, this is my last week with Lincoln Park Manor. I've got some proposals here, estimates for the roof, flat roof portion of our building. One of them is extremely high versus the others. You're all, you're looking at about $50,000. I'll just hand those off. I don't know, we'll probably need to give them to Dawn after the day, so...
Have you spoken with K Camp, or...
Yes, I've been dealing with Jess. One thing I'm gonna tell you is because of the large difference in the estimates, I did visit with Jess, forwarded him all these estimates, and so he could make heads or tails out of this. That was Friday. Jess called me back this morning, and what he had to say is, being as this job will be tied in with the West Hall and assisted living that we did over the summer, re-roofing the asphalt shingles.
What do you mean by tied in?
Tied in, meaning it was the same storm that caused the hail damage on that roof.
So why was that not part of the initial claim?
Well, I can explain that, because I was up on the roof when he was doing the asphalt shingles, and there was no sign of hail damage at that time. Just talking with these guys that do this kind of roofing, he said that's normal. Generally, on those membrane roofs, when the hailstone impacts those, it actually comes from the bottom of the membrane up to show your damage. Once you have some thermal differences, hot to cold, blah, 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 that's when they start exposing themselves, and it's obvious that, yes, you do have hail damage on it. That's why we had the wonderful leak this... Anyway, visiting with him, Jess is going to probably end up forwarding these estimates to CRL. They will probably, in return, get back with him as far as what they're going to spend on this. You found it, didn't you? From his explanation, it's a $250,000 job in combination with Ellsworth. I guess Ellsworth County and Lincoln County's tied together, so that's why I wanted to bring CRL into this. They may send another adjuster out, possibly. He doubted it, but they might bring one of their own out.
Are you having a leak? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we were having roof leaks, yes.
And just out of curiosity, Geisler, Byrd, and Ray are your bids. Is there a reason that Ull isn't in here? Only, I'm only asking that because they got the bid the last time, correct?
Um, yeah. Reason, I didn't, I didn't contact Ull. He did all the asphalt shingles. I don't know that he has a lot of experience with this membrane.
Okay.
The one that says Byrd was originally S&amp;S, the guys that originally installed that roof. But S&amp;S is looking to retire, so Byrd or Byrd Construction will be the ones that are buying him out. And they have a lot of experience, full-time employees bonded, all that too, so I checked into that. It's not a fly-by-night thing. Geisler, he's been in business for a long time, and Ray, I've heard of them before on other jobs. They do, in fact, Ray Construction, your high bid there, takes care of a lot of the schools. I know he's got a job in Tuskegee, Minneapolis. Oh, by the way, the rock that I was wanting for the front of the nursing home that's been sitting in landscape fabric for years now, he did mention, when they tear off the roofing, I think at Tuskegee, it's a lot of brown round stone. He'd send a couple trucks this way, drop it off in the parking lot, so whoever wants to go to barrel it in there and fill that back in and make it look attractive again, should be able to do that with him, so...
So I'd just like to point out in these estimates, there's no cost for removal from Byrd. Did you notice that?
I did notice that.
There's a removal cost of $7,250 on Geisler, removal cost of $12,496. Double that, I don't know why. First la, oh, first layer and second layer. So that's $25,000, and there's not that from Byrd. And then the difference in the materials, 50 mil TPO membrane, $47,125 from Geisler, TPO without a mil listed for the membrane, $45,000 from Byrd, and then 45 mil, the other one was 50, $41,180 for Ray.
And if you look at Geisler down there too, he did increase, if you guys want to jump up to a, I think it was a 60 mil, there's a little thing down at the bottom talking about it.
Add $3,625.
Correct, a heavier deal is gonna give you more warranty. Personally, watching the guys on the roof, I know Ray is very high right now, and visiting with him, him and Jess may get together and do some changes here, because he's looking at taking off layers of the, of the roofing underneath. You've got your styrofoam type material and some other layers there.
Yeah, this one just...
Talking about taking off an inch and a half of material and replacing it, because if it has any moisture at all from all these pinholes, you don't want to trap that moisture underneath there. So that's where he's looking at a big scale, because he did a board test and everything on that roof.
And also one of the...
He's very thorough.
There's an expansion expense here listed, $21,152 for insulation.
Right.
So what is K Camp responding to this, is what I'm...
That's what I'm saying. Jess is, Jess is gonna send all these to CRL. We'll get back to you guys. More than likely, you'll be looking at about $50,000. You, my guess, is what they'll cover. So he may end up after visiting with Ray Construction and...
Now, when it was leaking into the building, you had leaks here a couple weeks ago and all that stuff. Now, does some of that inside underneath, does some of that need to be replaced too?
Yeah.
Ceiling tiles?
Drywall and ceiling tiles.
All of that inside of there, or whatever, that's insulation?
Yes.
That would be part of this, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Why are you saying there's a max $50,000 on the claim?
That's just what Jess threw at me. He probably thought it would be...
Because it was part of a previous claim, so it's like a...
Correct, but he's gonna deal with CRL and see how they're gonna work that for you guys.
Okay.
Okay. In addition to that, with all three of these guys, with the HVAC unit for the kitchen up there, we've got ductwork and a rooftop unit. They all wanted to have that ductwork removed so they could get access to the roofing around there. I've got two proposals, both from Street Plumbing. One is time and material, which would probably be your best guess. Reason I'm gonna throw that there is the contractor that does the vent cleaning likes to use that ductwork as a step, getting a look at it to the next level up. If that has any water damage inside on the insulation of that ductwork, you could have a possible mold issue. So when they tear this thing all down, they'll strap it on top of the rooftop unit, they'll jack it, they'll do all that stuff. But if there, it has to be for any reason of rebuilding a piece of ductwork, and more than likely, it would just be that top layer, there's a, there's a feed and a return down below. But if they'd have any kind of moisture issues with that, they may have to rebuild a section. The other one he threw at me, and I had to cringe a little, I was like, holy cow, we're just removing ductwork, was that number. Looking at it from my perspective, I'd go time and material with, with them to remove it for you, because there may not be any problems at all. Any questions on that?
And to guess what time and material would cost, they don't have it here.
You're, you're, you're looking at $60 per man, per hour.
Hourly rate, six...
Should be right there.
But we don't have a ballpark figure, maybe $5,000 bucks or $10,000 bucks, or...
He estimated six hours.
Six hours, yeah, that was what was said in that.
I didn't see, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, so... Anything else there?
You should probably have more than one bid, I would think, for the procedure.
So who's replacing you? Anybody else? Not really.
No, sir, not, no. Jonathan Shale will be filling in for me. He's the housekeeper and... He'll be taking over my responsibilities. On this roof thing, I talked with Jess, explained things with him as well, that, hey, after today, over this week. So any information that he gets from CRL and all that, he's going to be contacting Dawn and keeping her in the loop as to what we're, what you guys need to do from that point on. Another thing I have to bring up real quick is for the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office, I have to put together a form of information on the generator. Now, I've got everything that I need except a fuel distributor. Cummins filled the fuel tank as part of their bid. We still do not have a vendor as to who is going to keep this thing up. Right now, we're just under three-quarters of a tank. We're okay. But talking with the technician on that, if you were to run at 100% load, which probably won't happen, but if you had to run 100% load, you were looking at one point, something days of use of that generator. So it's important to have that emergency person that can get down here and fuel this thing. So you guys might want to work that out, or if you know, if you want to make a decision.
Out of curiosity, I, it hasn't been used, is my assumption.
The generator? Yes.
Why?
It runs weekly. I do a monthly test and our annual. But it runs at least once a week for about 30 minutes.
30 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
So for how many months has that been?
We installed in June.
30 minutes a week, okay, so we're using a quarter tank of fuel for six months of testing.
How much fuel does it hold?
Now, see, when you, when we do the tests, you are not doing it under load, except for once a month.
I understand it would use more, I'm just saying, but we can expect to go through a quarter tank every six months?
Yeah.
If we're not using it, using it, just testing it.
Right, that's just testing.
How much fuel does it hold?
Just a little over 500 gallons.
500 gallons?
Yeah.
You haven't really used it in an emergency situation.
We, we, we have. We've had some power outage, just where it has had to...
Okay, good. Well, that, that'll work fine?
Yeah.
Good.
Worked like a charm, it's great.
Yeah, that's good.
Been really good.
Okay.
So anyway, in order for me to get this form completed, I, I mean, that's, that's what I'm needing. I need to get an account number, contact information, and basically a description of how the generator will be refilled or resupplied in an emergency event. So whatever you guys come up with, if you want to use Mark or the company out of Beloit, Ag?
CBA.
Yeah, whatever.
Used to be Co-Pharmway.
Ag, okay, yeah. You know, we just need to kind of get that filled in, so we're following the fire marshal's requests.
You have like a form for that?
What I'm filling out.
That's it right there, okay.
Yeah.
So we would approve that and get some contractor, like a CBA?
Yeah.
Make a contract with them to do this.
Right, yeah.
Fuel distributor contact information and account number for them. Why would they want the account number? That's pretty interesting. I would say in the event of an emergency, that might be something that the emergency manager would be a great resource there to make sure that something like that happens, to have a point of contact in the courthouse.
David, Doug, yeah. Maybe he should be aware of all that anyway, or involved with it, yeah. My opinion. Unless that's not part of his title, I don't know.
I guess this is kind of a fuel thing, I don't know.
Maybe it is involved, yeah.
He, he should know about it, but...
We don't have any way in the county to do that from our fuel supply tank. We do not have a, a way.
Does Mark take care of the highway department station?
We, we do, we take, or they call around and see who has the best price. And I guess I would say, since Mark's a Lincoln County resident, that probably is who we opt to.
And, and that way too, if he's close.
He's a vendor.
If, if we work with Mark, you know, you guys may want to make sure that if he has to pump some off, I put winterized fuel in that thing, so you're not gelling. Monitoring, you know, Cummins is gonna be taking care of your fuel test, so you know if you've got water, bacteria, any of that stuff. But that way, he can pump it off and, and keep you guys up to par, keep that machine running the way it should be.
Probably need, we would need to visit with him before we do that, but...
Okay.
But it sounds to me like what you're saying is, in the event of an emergency, you're going to suck that fuel down in a day. So you need to have someone who's available to call and actually schedule that fuel supply. So at that time, you don't really need to, you can have a vendor listed, but at that time, it's a state of an emergency. You're gonna look for someone who's immediately available.
And what that falls on, Ms. Blue, is gonna be the person doing maintenance. That would fall on my shoulders if I was still there to be doing the weekly test, knowing where that fuel level's at.
Right, but since we pay for it, it falls on our shoulders. And I'm saying we need to have a point of contact here, which cannot be the commission, because we're here once a week.
Correct.
So I would say that that might be a great thing to have a responsibility of an emergency title, which is the emergency manager, in my opinion. But we can discuss that further.
Okay.
And I will...
Somebody needs to do it bottom line, right?
Correct, yeah.
And at that time, I mean, it does, if, if someone's unavailable with whom you have an account, you call the next person. It's not like you have to have a setup where that's the only supplier.
Yeah.
I mean, that undermines the whole concept of it being an emergency.
I think the fire marshal just wants to see that you have a dead, dead plan.
You have established someone.
This guy knows that he is going to be maintaining this.
Right, and if he's on an emergency for someone else, then he won't be available for us. So you want to have someone that's gonna make those calls and find someone to get here as soon as possible.
Right, right.
There's more than one option, so...
And I think there's, it may be good just to list all three of our vendors that we use.
Excellent idea. Excellent idea.
You know, list him, list them, and you're right, we need somebody that's going to make that call. And I assume it'll have to be from nursing homes, because they're the ones that are gonna know it. And we can all use Martin, but I don't, what Martin's name is now, but it's not Martin.
No, Martin will.
Yeah.
No, they've changed them, yeah.
So I give you three, I, I guess I, I might leave the account number blank.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem necessary.
You could, if, if we, if we put down three different, two or three different accounts, I, I would say so too.
Yeah, I would put.
It's to prove that we have a plan in place, I understand, it's a validity of being able to service that item.
This is just so we're aware that we're going to have to use fuel.
Right.
Uh, do we need a motion, Dawn, to have him put those names in, or can we just instruct him to?
I don't think so, I think you could just make the list and, because we're not approving any contract or payment to anyone, so.
Michael would know for sure who would, who the three are, those are the three we use.
Okay.
Basically.
Mark, Agco.
Mark, Agco and, and, um, Martin down there, it's not Martin anymore, B and S or something.
Yeah, one other, I can't, yeah.
But, but he knows what the names of them are.
Okay, I'll get with, I'll get with him.
Yeah, just hear it with him, see who he calls for fuel.
Did you have anything else, Greg?
Um, not really, uh, just like I said, as I, uh, as I'm on my way out, just, and I know you guys are in a big thing with getting this all figured out, nursing homes business, just a reminder of unfinished projects, um, you know, we still have the window projects and door projects. I'd kind of like to know where you guys are at with that, who's, who's overseeing that now?
The doors?
The fire doors, haven't heard a word.
Right, we have not discussed it, um, I actually brought it up to, um, Eric Johnson.
Okay.
Eric, isn't it? I would still like to request that he provide us the maps and the blueprints that he created for seventy thousand dollars that we haven't seen. I don't see why we can't use that as a starting point, and you're saying this is a Fire Marshal request to see that rating of every wall around every door before those doors are installed. But my confusion is, if the bid was for the prime door for every entranceway and we approved it, why did it not get done regardless of the ratings of the walls and the ceiling?
Every entrance door? No, every fire door.
Every fire door, excuse me.
Okay, um, I was gonna say, in the original, when we started this, I only replaced one entrance door, and that's our ambulance door because it's terrible. Uh, yeah, I have to agree with you a little bit on this, Alexis, uh, my, my thing was, why can't we just go with the highest fire rated doors?
I thought that's what we approved, that was my assumption.
But, but the door company themselves has regulations from the Fire Marshal, they want to know all of this and make sure that that wall where these doors are located are up to snuff.
So then how could they approve a bid to send to us for approval without knowing that in the first place? I mean, there's some kind of ring around the rosy here that is not kosher.
There is, and it may be something you guys.
What is the name of that door company?
Oh, Lord, uh, you guys probably have it now, I handed it to Terry.
Okay, yeah, Terry was overseeing.
It was Overhead Door Company was the main.
Overhead?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, you guys might want to shop around again for this.
Weren't they part of, was that separate from the project bidding totally, or was that?
That's a separate deal, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a Fire Marshal thing that was brought up, not a construction thing.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, we do need to follow up on that. And I think we need to start with the architect engineering firm that was to provide us the plans. I mean, I don't see why between their plans and the door company, you'd think they've both done this before. Why should the, the commission has no, we have no ability to have any say in that other than to approve the price.
Correct.
So, okay, well, thank you, I'm gonna keep moving along here.
Good luck to you.
Uh, yeah, thank you, and hey, Randy, if you, uh, you know, we visited, if you want to try to visit, because any of you guys want to stop by and visit me, look, things over.
This week? I will, I'll come by.
I did before Wednesday.
I'll call you this, okay.
I'm gonna be busy loading things out and getting out of there, so.
Okay, I'll try to, yeah, you can show me around.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Judy, are you ready?
Okay. Going back to this board.
Yes.
I came on in November twenty sixteen, I think I replied Sandy Adams, I know Adams, so it's the last name.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, if you, her term ended December twenty seventeen, that was fourteen months, so that would mean I was a full term.
You're saying you finished out her term from that prior year through the next year.
December twenty seventeen.
So you're saying yours should actually be eighteen and nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I see. That actually makes a little more sense because we don't have.
Fourteen months is over half a hundred, are we, okay.
I see what you're saying, you were finishing an unexpired term.
Yes.
And then when it expired, you had already agreed to take the next one, which would be last year and this current year.
Yes.
Dawn, did you catch that? Okay, let's correct that, if everyone's okay with the dates there, thank you for the clarification.
When you first asked, it was like, my mind was somewhere else.
Well, that is important because we don't really have anyone else going off, well, first term ends would be Schneider, Oliver's, and then Watson, so then the other ones would end in twenty twenty, so there we have a staggering of the next year, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Now, um, for the budget.
Yeah.
Do you have?
Yeah, I'm ready, how much money you want, Judy?
It says forty thousand.
You want forty thousand?
Well, that's.
Let's see, there's four of us here, ten thousand apiece.
Good luck.
Yes, okay. And it was finally explained to me why you suddenly wanted, because I'm thinking springtime is when we put budget.
Maybe see that?
Don't you have copies?
Um, did I? I thought I laid a copy up there.
I'm sorry, did I bury it?
Thank God I made it, brought it, I'll keep it.
I, I don't have.
We can get copies.
It wants me.
Uh.
Do you have it back there?
I do not, I don't, I, I don't know what I did, I thought I laid it up there.
Okay. And it is quite a bit less because our.
How much less?
I think it was seventy and this is forty, so that's not good, thirty five, because we don't have Teresa in her highway.
Are you aware that we only approve seventy five thousand for the entire mill levy?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm just asking, I, I'm, that's what happened in this last budget.
This is just what I was told.
You're the president now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For two weeks, something like that.
Wait, you mean there's gonna be a new president?
No, I have been only.
I see what you're saying.
Total of two weeks.
You're new for, yes, two weeks of being of the presidency, I understand.
Okay, um, and we did hire Becky Rathman as a, as you know, a coordinator, but we're gonna change the name to manager.
So you did that at your last meeting?
Yes.
And did you, did you guys approve the budget as a group at your last meeting?
The, no, we had a meeting, we had the meeting on a Tuesday and on Thursday, we all met and.
Okay, so you had a special meeting for your budget?
Yes.
Thank you, Doc.
Now, this is for a year, we're talking.
I'll just go through it, um, wages twelve thousand, FICA portion of the taxes nine hundred, liability insurance one hundred and sixty-three dollars, rent twelve hundred dollars, telephone and internet twenty-five hundred dollars, bank fees sixty dollars, office supplies five hundred and forty dollars, postage five hundred dollars, officer's bond one hundred and forty dollars, North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging fifteen hundred, Kansas annual filing fee forty dollars, I assume that's for the five oh one C three, mileage for delivering meals thirty-seven hundred dollars, homemaker services five thousand, bus passes twelve hundred, newspaper ads twenty-five hundred, miscellaneous sixteen hundred and change, professional fees sixty-four hundred, totaling forty thousand. So my first question is, we had had a lot of discussion last year about how much was in the Cat- Lincoln County Council on Aging savings, and it was my understanding that when the previous employee left, the council was still paying for several months for the health insurance plan because it was on a direct deduct, uh, direct payment. Okay, so.
We thought it had been canceled, and it was.
And then, um, and then it's my understanding, just from speaking to a few people on the board, I have not been to the meeting and asked, that no one really knows. So do you know what's in your bank that's left from what the commission has given you over previous years? Because I know you had quite a savings built up.
Okay, we cashed in a C D, which was twenty thousand, and right now, the, I think there's approximately nine thousand in the checking account, and there's still one C D for twenty. Um, it was kind of up in the air.
Two, so you had two CDs for twenty and then you had nine in your checking, am I saying that?
Right now, no, that's not what we had, that's what we have now because we cashed in the one twenty thousand and put, because, um, we paid Sylvan four thousand and we didn't have the money to cover the check, so we cashed in the C D for their, their part of what.
So out of the twenty, that, out of the C D that was twenty, you distributed four, and then you put the sixteen.
It's in there and all of, um, also, I think out of that, there was the check because I was told that we were overdrawn, Teresa's final check. So anyway, that twenty thousand was put in, um, to do all that, um.
Well, I won't speak for the board, I'll just speak for myself, I think we need to see the financial documents from this group. And so I would say we should kind of table this discussion until you bring us some bank statements and some treasurer's reports, so that we know where we are with what we've already distributed to this group, what they've spent, and where you are currently with your funding request, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, um, please object if you don't agree with that.
All right.
I, I think we need an accounting of how much cash is available in.
Okay, I can do that, there, for four months, there wasn't any treasurer's report, Dan just read off what check she wrote.
There should be bank statements for every month.
It would be very, all we need to know is the bank, how much is in the bank? How much?
Okay.
How much do you have in CDs, how much do you have in savings, how much do you have in checking? Just give us that amount of money so we know what you have to operate on and what we, what we'll give you. I do not think your budget is out of line, uh, but, but we do not want to, uh, pour in a bunch of money that we don't need to.
And real quick, this professional piece, we have hired Jenny Kringle to help do a lot of this with payroll and since Becky's been, and how you take out all the, okay.
She's doing the accounting services, basically.
Yeah, yes, she's not on our board, we're just.
Is that a year's estimate for those services?
No, it's, she's, but we were also worried, heaven forbid if we had another lawyer, where are we coming up with some money? Um, I don't want a lawyer, believe me, but we're trying to think.
Well, you, you need to protect yourself in that, it doesn't mean that, this budget doesn't mean that you're going to spend that, it just means that those are possibilities that, that will come up and that we can, you will be covered, so.
Like we're trying, we would like to see the bus passes used more. We are paying, helping someone with house cleaning, and we've heard of another one. We also just got a report, a senior, uh, needs a ramp. Here again, they won't tell me who, but I'm talking with, uh, I think an insurance company, I'm not sure who, but they're asking for help. Um, so we're trying to do a few more things, okay? And, uh, we also done a bylaws, but it isn't printed up yet. Um, our secretary had an emergency, um, profession is very bad, so that didn't get typed up, we'll be different today. Okay, uh, next week, I'll bring in, find all these bank statements.
I, I will reiterate one thing that it doesn't sound like you knew, and maybe you could take that back to the board. We approved, out of, we have two mills that we can possibly tax for, and it's called Services for the, for the elderly. And out of that two mills, for the last several years, including this two thousand nineteen year, we have approved a flat dollar amount of seventy-five thousand. So just so you're aware, of all the groups that may be coming to us for senior services money, that's the total distribution dollar amount that we have budgeted.
So, and here again, I'm kind of lost, I thought it was just to carry us, but this is for a full year. Okay.
This is your new budget, this is, this is different than the one they turned in when we were doing our budget.
Basically what you're saying is you want forty thousand dollars from our two mills to run the Council on Aging for this year. And that's, that's understood, yeah, I understand.
Anyway. Any other thing?
Thank you, I.
Okay.
I understand, yep.
I'll get this to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. Doug and Kelly, if you're ready, thank you for waiting.
You've been squeezing us in.
Fifteen minutes never seems to be enough.
Well, there's a lot that you may have thoughts on, but I wanted to give Mr. Randy, he's seeing a newsletter right there.
Okay.
And this, since I'm here, is very handy, Kelly had, uh, she participated in a board meeting last Thursday by Zoom, and this is to go out to all the counties. This is a standard, every five years, we ask for this from counties, a resolution of, I call it involvement support in North Central Regional Planning Commission. And, uh, to give that even a little bit more dessert, let's say, that's the, but here is what I would call the vision document of what North Central is all about, which you don't have to, we don't have to talk about it today, you don't have to look at it, so. But it's something to contemplate in the not-too-distant future. And I should have three of these, so. But as you've entrusted Kelly in, in the board realm, she has seen it, she's probably even memorized it.
Oh, yes, I have.
She's seen it.
I study it at night.
She, she knows what we get involved with, but the resolution can be adopted any of the next three Mondays, that's fine. And we just ask for that back so we can send it off to the federal government, assuming there'll be an operation after February fifteenth or seventeenth. But we don't have to have it to them until, with all of the other county resolutions, until, uh, mid-March, so. That's my Budinsky.
Okay. Um, well, I guess as a follow-up to last week, where we're talking about the courthouse repairs and, um, the Kansas Historical Society has a grant, a Historic Preservation Fund grant, um, that can do assessment, planning type work for, um, historic properties. And so, um, uh, sometime a year ago, I don't really remember when, but we had talked about the need to improve the steps, there's issues there, um, and then last week, I kind of mentioned, you know, do you, do we want to just focus on the steps or is there anything else that you want to fold into, um, a project? The project being to do an assessment of, of what the building needs. Um, and so the question from last, uh, week was, in terms of applying for the grant, who would do that, and you asked me to ask Doug, and so I've asked Doug, and now he's here, so I thought we could answer those questions and just see, um, how you guys want to move forward, if you want to do a project this year, or where do we go from here, so.
So, the grant, what we're wanting to know. So, the grant, what we're wanting to know is, does North Central Kansas write the grant?
Well, we could, we will definitely help in that, I call it kind of the planning process, yeah. We will participate, because she'll likely be that main contact to be involved, so. So yes.
Okay. So, and I guess for my own, does that mean you're writing the grant and I'm feeding you information?
Yes.
Or I'm writing the grant and you're feeding the information, or?
The former, the first one.
The former, okay.
Now, we will feed you the information.
Feed, feed me.
Feed you, and then you, and.
We'll put the pieces together, puzzle.
Okay.
And actually, very timely, but yeah, I'll be highly involved. But I have two staff down there today, learning about this process more in-depth as far as the current things. There's a workshop on it and to be, today, I guess, so.
So, do you think we ought to do a total assessment? Or do you think we ought to place it into projects? We know that the front steps is probably one of the major things, it needs to be done immediately. Do we do an assessment of just the steps? Or do we find out what the total need of this building is? And then we will take those proj, and then we'll have the assessments done for all the things that need done? And then we can apply as we move along, or?
From my perspective, you, well, probably have multiple shots, but really, an initial overarching or comprehensive review would be good. Just go with it for now and see what you can take at a small bite at a time. But to have a look at things, your angle, it sounds like it's prioritizing with step issues. But there may be something else, the not-too-distant future, that, well, you might have thought, especially since the extension office over there is getting emptied or things like that. Well, might as well look at that and see if there's issues to contemplate.
Always the chance that is a major problem.
And that, that expert might be a pretty good person to tap into for these things, so. I think it's worthwhile looking at the comprehensive perspective.
Were you here when they redid the walls in the economic development room?
Yes, I was.
And was that covered with something like this prior?
Way, and way back when, I'll go back to when Shirley Jones was the county commissioner. But we had a heritage trust fund project, and we also helped the county with a block grant to install the elevator. Historical Society came out to review, comment, they said, clean that all up. They said that's, and it was already buckling in those days, and that was about 1989, 90, 91? Someplace in those days. And it looks really nice.
I just, I have some concern that if, I mean, if we are barricading in moisture with these interior layers of paneling and such, that's probably going to be an issue when someone does a, a full spectrum analysis.
Now, ideally, but that was 20 years ago, and I can't say that Don was on board as county assistant county or deputy county clerk, but the drainage project that took place helped move moisture. Certainly, it's not wet in the furnace room like it used to be every day. And taking a clay tile system and moving moisture away was the big part of that. But it still is there in spots. I hope it's not as bad as it was.
So do you think this assessment would be inside or just the outside? Or do we do both, or?
Well, my thought would be, I guess, it kind of depends on just how much you want to tackle and what's your budget.
If I may interject, I think it needs to be structural. I think that's, you know, if we get into everything, you can always update electricity, you can do that every two years, you can always update your furnace system. I mean, those are things that are never-ending projects, that I think if we focus on structurally what needs to be done, that's been several decades of a deterioration, so.
And it's likely something that's historic in nature, because that's what they want to preserve. They aim the state, but you want to preserve the structure, but that's usually something historic in nature.
I guess I was, I was, I wasn't thinking of electrical and stuff like that. I was thinking of the walls and the configuration of the rooms and, and, you know, making sure that the windows, you know, the windows, do they need to be redone? I mean, you know, we can't replace them, but, you know, they're, they're of historical significance, you know? Is there some damage being done that we need to do those?
That probably comes under the painting, doesn't it? Aren't they wooden framed? At least on the outside, the painting, I would assume.
Yeah. At least what, what that assessment, or that cost estimate that I had, I gave to you guys last week, was mostly just painting the windows and stuff like that, but not necessarily looking at the condition of the windows.
Like reblazing them or something?
Right. So that, that really wasn't into that, although that, I mean, that's.
Historical Society would be supportive of that. They like to see that.
Now, if we do get the funding due, that you get grants, what percentage would be a grant? Would we have to match a certain amount?
It depends on the program. Heritage Trust Fund is, well, let's say it's 80/20, roughly, something like that. And, but it's maximum of $90,000. A lot of applicants are in the 60, 70,000, just depends on the total cost and where things are at.
But you can also phase things.
Yeah.
So I, I was talking to the Hodgman County Economic Development Director, and they've done all their windows in their courthouse, and they, their courthouse, I think it's got to have more windows than we do, and bigger windows. And they just, they phased it, I think, five or six phases, so that they could apply five or six times at the maximum level, 90,000 each time. But it was like one floor was one phase, the next year, they did another floor.
Yearly, they were.
So that they've got probably a half million dollars worth of grants for that.
Is Heritage Trust strictly historical?
It's a historical facility, either on the state register or the national register, either one.
Yeah.
And in that case, that Kelly was talking about Hodgman County, the county had approached that in the 90s with the drainage project, associated elevator was certain, move things, stir that up. But then also tuck pointing was done as part of another project right behind it. And, you know, that's been 20 years ago, but a lot of tuck pointing should last for quite a few years.
My personal feeling is, we move on, we, we, we try. I, I think we.
Well, I guess try, but what exactly is the scope of what we tried for? Is it, are we talking the steps and masonry issues? Or do we do a bigger preservation plan where we're looking at masonry, windows, and?
I think the assessment includes all, but I think when we get down to specifics, we'll be doing, as he said, pieces of it, so we can maximize it, but.
Hodgman County like.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to ask, the extent of what we're assessing.
I think you need to assess the tuck pointing and steps and the whole thing, I, to me, I.
Everything exterior, masonry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then exterior painting and wood preservation type. I mean, we may have some pieces of wood that, you know, have deteriorated completely, where you don't want to paint over them.
Okay.
Is that what you're getting at?
I think we just need an assessment of the outside of the building.
Okay.
We did speak, I don't know what Kelly filled you in on, but we did speak with a local stone mason who said that front step issue may turn into a complete demolition rebuild because of the nature of the connect, the connecting problems with the poured cement steps and then connecting them to the stone walls. And because it's suspended and you can walk underneath, it's kind of a logistical problem. But he did say the back steps are a pretty simple fix. So if we just had some simple tuck pointing that needed done on the exterior walls, my one concern though was, is that going to, you know, if you're looking at the exterior wall, you're looking at not necessarily interior, but the interior of the exterior wall, which if you have that much deterioration in the first six inches on the inside, there's no use in just helping the outside, you know, support. So that would be something to contemplate. Do they need to get in here and?
Right.
Our maintenance person had some concerns about how far in some of the grout had deteriorated on this inside of the outside wall. So I'm thinking just outside walls, but it kind of consists of both sides of the block.
Right, right. So like I'm here.
But we need to concentrate on those steps, right?
Yes, yes.
Steps is a primary, yeah.
We could phase within that project if we had to, and say the steps are priority, and then the structure of the outside, you know, supporting walls. And then the painting and refinishing of, you know, window frames and the tower, et cetera, you know?
Okay.
Doug, do you have a suggestion that we shouldn't do it all in one big package like that, or what?
I, I agree with the concept of those three primary areas with some subemphasis, but, no, it sounds good. And just knowing the building, so those all have value. Historical Society would care about it. She knows historic preservation pretty well, too, so.
I would say with, so the grant that's coming up is, is, the name of the grant is the Historic Preservation Fund Grant. And so that's due in March. You do the assessment of it, but the actual work, whatever comes out of that, then in November is the Heritage Trust Fund Grant application is due. And then you take whatever pieces out of that and you say, okay, we're going to apply for the steps this year, we're going to apply for paint and windows next year, we're going to, you know, you can kind of.
It's more of the implementation side, the construction.
Did you happen to see or discuss the initial preliminary bid that she got for the assessment part of it?
Uh, not in depth.
Okay, what was the total on that? I was just wondering if it was in the ballpark of what you thought was acceptable. I'm sure they're all different, but.
Yeah, it does.
If, if we're adding more to that, because they were just looking at the steps and paint. So if we're asking them to look interior stuff, and if you want them to look at the windows.
Maybe you can just rework those numbers for us, and we can just keep us abreast and I, now, is there going to be a fee from North Central Regional Planning?
Nope, it's part of our, our doings. If we were doing, which we talked about, the capital improvement plan over four, five, six meetings, or if we were, we weren't really qualified to do this entrepreneurship program, we can support it, obviously, with some tax credit money. But if we were doing that over a series of nights, that would be something, but, no, this is right in the, the bailiwick of, well, what you see on the vision and objectives statements, those five pages.
All right. Well, thank you for that, we appreciate your help.
Do you know what we want you to do now?
Well, I think so.
Was it consensus?
I'm not sure I do know what we want to do.
I think, what I think we'll do is, we'll maybe try and type up just a scope or something like that and maybe get that back to you just one last time before it goes into a grant application. So you kind of know, it's, it's a 60/40, 60% grant, 40% match. So what you guys are committing to in that application, so you'll, you'll see something before it goes to anywhere. And then you'll have a chance to edit or put in there, so.
Are you still planning on utilizing John Paul to maybe collect some data and documentation?
Yeah, I think it would be good to have him involved in, in anything from an educational perspective, what these grants can do, and because he sees more of this stuff than any of us, so.
Right.
For him to be familiar with it and kind of always have it on his radar of where we can tap into grant funding.
And you're not alone, almost any courthouse that's 100 years old or 120 years old is doing some facing the same. Moving and changing and has issues. Yeah, Washington County courthouse is only about 90 years old, but it has some issues, big-time issues down, down below, so. Extension there is, well, they're taking things off the wall. They had sheet rock, or they had some other wall materials, and it's coming off, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, next we have Michael O'Hara, Highway Department.
Update on OS 87. KDOT did approve the erosion control plan, they're back to work. Uh, they got the, the false wood piles drove. They got riprap placed in spans one and three. And as long as they continue to follow their plan, the KDOT's not necessarily going to give them any issues, I guess. So we're moving right along now. Had a follow-up phone call with Beverly Kissick this morning, and she's going to be getting me written confirmation that she is going to be fine with the closure of that road. I answered her questions there last week and we did some discussion and got a few things on the same page.
I also visited with her last week, too.
Okay. Excuse me, OS 105, we've got a little bit of work done when the weather was nice there last week, and hopefully we can get some more done this week, keep plugging away as we can here. That's pretty much all I have for this week.
Yeah, we've been working, trying to haul some road stone from quartzite and trying to fix up some bad places while we're able to get around and work on them.
I noticed you have some, this looks good, thanks.
Yeah, most of it looks like it's working out pretty good, so hoping it gets the weather to stay that way.
Yeah, it's a weather cooperative, yeah.
Yeah, we've been working pretty much this area out in here last week.
Yeah.
We got some up west there the week before, so.
Okay.
Kind of working around getting most of that fixed we can while the weather persists. And some of the guys have been out trying to blade some of the roads that was tore up and stuff. It kind of dried out, froze out, and trying to get some of the clods and ruts filled in on those, so.
Yeah.
Like you said, boy, just think of getting started on the bridge out here again, and the weather turns off like this and freezes them out again, so. Hopefully, we'll get it one of these days. Other than that, I guess I have a whole lot more.
I had someone I know that, I know you guys have had issues trying to get good gravel right, because it's being depleted out of a lot of the pits. Somebody I know contacted me, said they have south out here, so probably some, they think pretty good gravel and would open up an area, and I'll just, I'll give you their contact, Michael, because at least you can test it or check it, because they're willing to sell some. And obviously, we need some good quality gravel, so I'll get you with that later, Mike.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do you have anything else specifically, Bob?
No, nothing specifically.
Okay, I had two things. Um, I think the commission needs to give some direction as far as what we're going to do to address the block gravel pit, the block gravel pit. I had asked Michael, I know we briefly discussed it in the meeting, but I had emailed him and asked when exactly the state will come out, and we're basically just looking at sometime in the spring, so it's kind of open-ended. But I do feel that the commission needs to respond with a letter this time. Last time, we received a letter from their attorney, we sent you out in person and you spoke with the family. Um, now, I think it's appropriate that we respond in writing. And so my suggestion was, we tell them that, we send the agreement, you did send me that agreement. We send the agree, we send a copy of the agreement, that was the original agreement. And then, from what year was that?
1995.
Okay. The 1995 agreement, and also a statement that we intend to have inspected by the state this spring. And that is pretty much the full extent of the capacity of what we do in this situation. Does that sound appropriate? Could we draft something like that, Don, for the commission to approve and sign? I, I will, you, I will forward you the, you emailed that to me, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I will forward you that agreement. The other thing is, Bob, I was told that you were going to follow up on some complaints that I had written in. There was the, the road that comes from north of Denmark and it kind of doglegs around and goes up past Bethany Church to the north. That road, did you happen to take a look at that?
I didn't get up there, I got part of it, I got out here by the landfill and a couple other places.
Yeah, the landfill road was another.
Yeah, I didn't get clear up there.
What do you think's going on?
Well, I know there's some issues in there, it's got, kind of lost its crown and they've got some low places in there. I've been after them and tried to work on it, but the weather conditions has kind of put a halt to doing what we really wanted to do, try to get some shoulders pulled off and kind of get some crown back into those places. We'll probably try to haul all the material there here from Ken and try to work on that a little bit as weather conditions allow.
Is that the same operator for those two routes? Do you, is, is there a, do, do we need to learn how to put a crown on? I mean, if you're saying that, it's obviously been, it's not just happened, it's been a while in this shape. Some people out in, out in the country refer to it as the cookie sheet. You got a flat, and then you got little ridges on the edges, and then you create kind of like a riverbed. Do you think that's something that we can do training on? Or how do we, that's a lot of work to re-establish, if it did have a crown on it, if it's been dug out like that, how do we come full circle? It's a lot of work to reestablish if it did have a crown on it, if it's been dug out like that, how do we come full circle?
Between, like I said, blades and traffic keeps packing it down and beating out your crown and stuff all the time. If the blade don't keep working at it and try to keep building it every time it bleeds, so it eventually gets that way, so.
So you're saying it's not an operator issue? You're saying it's, that's a normal situation to encounter?
Like I said, it's not totally operator. Any road, if you don't, he needs to maintain it a little better, but any road's gonna get that way. The traffic keeps beating the center down and pushing it out, so you have to keep working, pulling it back every time you blade.
So how do you teach someone to do that?
Well, you just keep working at them and trying to tell them and explain to them what they need to do. We've been talking, we're gonna try to get them in and do some talking with all the blade guys about some of the procedures, how they need to do and stuff, and see if we can get them to approve the way they do some of their blade work. Have a problem with them, they just wanna move the windrow from one side to the other and not stop and fix a little place that's bad or something, right? So trying to work at them to get them to do things like that.
So I guess I have one more thing that I wanted to bring up, not two, oh, three. The outlying shops where the graders are kept and then the actual mower that they share for those two routes. Every mower deck is on a tractor that sits there, correct? So we have five? Okay, and what else are those tractors used for, other than the mowing?
That's about it. One little valve or a power rotor or something like that, or like that, but most of the time it's just for mowing.
Okay. I was speaking with some different counties of our size at the, at the meeting there that we went to in Overland Park for the annual meeting, and they're starting to contract out the mowing. And I'm just wondering what, what kind of expense we are acquiring to do that? You know, how much time are the blade guys losing doing the mowing and not doing other projects? And what kind of maintenance upkeep do we have on those five pieces of equipment? And then, because I, some of the concern is every year the Johnson grass heads out before we cut it. So then we cut it and blow the seed everywhere and then it looks bad on our noxious weed. So unfortunately, both of those are under your direction and you've got your own little, you know, cat chasing its tail situation. So I'm wondering if that's something we shouldn't start contemplating.
Well, most of the time, of course, like I say, we kind of counted on that spray man to get that knocked down before it hills and see if it gets sprayed.
Well, that's under your purview now, so that would be up to you to make sure it happens.
Yeah.
I mean, if he was his own independent department as it used to be, then you could say that, you know, we, we wanted him to do it. But now it's, it's up to you to make sure that happens. Or I think we could do some cost analysis and see what it would, what, what our results would be for contracting out the mowing. I mean, I think last year it got done twice in most areas. I know you shoot for three times. That would be once a month for the hot summer months. I'm not sure that that's, you know, I, it seems like it's too late, kind of, before it gets started. But then I know once you cut it, it's growing like mad if we get a rain. We, we may need to look at what contracting numbers would be and how much time. Are they dedicating on their time cards, the mowing, the days of mowing?
Yeah.
So you can easily look that up and see what you put into time, manpower and time.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Yeah, it's, it's expensive, I'll tell you that.
To do it ourselves?
I'm sure it's gonna be expensive to contract, too. What would be excellent, if you could tell me what counties you know that are contracting, then I could reach out to them, see who they're using, how they put bids together. Because I don't know a contractor or a company that does, that does do it in our area. You know, uh, years ago I did hear of some counties out in western Kansas that tried it and it just didn't work. It lasted one year. Contractor said, I can't afford it. They gave a price that was astronomical and there was nobody else in the area, so they just had to cut them and they had to buy their equipment over again and start doing it themselves. But, you know, that's been, I don't know, eight, ten years ago now, but, you know, we can look into it.
One thing usually we try to do, we don't always get it done, but like to run the grader with them more to pull, because of weeds and stuff. They're kind of starting to grow on the edge, trim them off.
Yeah.
And pull a windrow over. Otherwise, if we don't pull it over, they have to run outside that and they only mow about half what they should be mowing, so. That's another issue we have.
Yeah.
Like I said, it don't always work that way, but we try to as much as we can, have to blade and mow together. Makes a lot better gallop out of it.
Michael, an issue, a question came up about buying the fuel that you get for the county. Do you put bids out like to different places like CBA and that place in Russell County for fuel for your vehicles?
Not currently.
Oh.
Uh, we have off and on over the years.
We were just wondering, because we were, you know, paying the council and we was wondering, but there's no local county distributor, is there? So you have to go out of county to get, uh, fuel delivered, is that right?
Basically, yes.
Yeah, because we don't have a big distributorship within Lincoln County, so you go to somewhere else. I was just curious if you bided that or how that worked, or if you just, if you're Russ, if you're working at Sylvan, probably just be handier just to get it from Russell County because they're closer, right? Something like that.
It varies. Um, it's kind of convenient to be able to have it set up on a routine where we have it, like our outlying shops are only a thousand gallon fuel tanks. So it's set up wherever two weeks that the delivery guy will make his rounds.
I see.
And keep fuel there.
So do, do you have a contract with them or a?
No.
A deal made with them? You just tell them to refill it or whatever? I was, because I was talking to like some people, maybe, I don't know if we would, if we bid that, could we maybe save a little money, you think, or would it not be worthwhile? If, if you, in other words, bid, say, CBA or that place, used to be George Martin Fuel, you know, down by I-156. I was just wondering if, you know, because. We buy a lot of fuel, obviously, spend a lot of money, uh, we can save five, ten grand, you know, that's five, ten grand. Now, I don't know if that's feasible, you know, you deal with that all the time, but I was just curious about that.
You know, I guess it's kind of hard to explain. We have done bids over the years where we've contracted. I can't say we ever made money.
Why, Mr. Wallace this morning was under the impression that you were still doing bids.
No, I said you called around.
Well, that's.
We've called around and got some shopping prices.
Yeah.
But we don't do that every time, you know, once or twice a year, you know, we'll see if, make sure that we're in check with what the markets are. But when you're on a every-two-week rotation that becomes somewhat automatic, I guess it's a convenience for us to not have to call every two weeks.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying that. About once a year or something.
You know.
Transport, when you unload your transport out here, how do you determine how your fuel, your in Lincoln?
We usually use the person that does our rural routes.
So what we're saying is that the same vendor has been servicing the highway department for quite some time without competition?
No, I think he just switched here, what, a year ago, maybe? We're, we were using a different vendor.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm just curious how you do it.
You know, in the last six years, I believe, we use CBA, DNS and Home Oil in the last five years. You know, if you guys would like us to do it a different way, just let me know and we can.
Well, I was wondering if you could bid, say, you want, I don't know how many gallons you use, a hundred thousand gallons or fifty thousand, whatever, a year? You know, if you could save ten cents a gallon or, or five.
The last, the last time we tried what I'm gonna call contract, not bid price, because if you call in today, they're gonna give you today's rack price. Uh, fuel has become such a volatile source and there's big movements daily. You know, so I can call one company in preparation for what he's gonna charge me. And that's all gonna depend on what time he gets to that rack and what day he gets to that rack to get his fuel. So I could call three different people and I'm gonna get potentially three different prices. And that's not even a guaranteed price, because they can tell you what it is right now, but not necessarily when they put the truck underneath the rack. Does that make sense?
So you can't sign a payment agreement according to the now price? Because I've never heard of that, that they're gonna get, quote you a price now and then give you a bill for something different after they make it out there. I've never heard of any vendor doing something like that.
You can't, we can't lock in like a.
Well, you can lock in a price.
Okay.
But I, the last time we did that, it was not pretty, no.
But it was.
Because they, they.
So they made, so same money.
They have to set the price so high because of the volatility of the market, they don't know what it's gonna do and how much it's gonna fluctuate. So to cover their tail, they had to set that price up here, when if we would've been paying rack price, we could've been buying it for this price down here.
Could've saved money, yeah.
But you don't have to do it for the entire year, you could do it monthly. I mean, if you're saying it's coming every two weeks, then you're at least guaranteed your price for two refills is kind of the concept, I mean.
I don't know if that'd save you much money doing it that often, but would it?
Well, I'm all for capitalism of the market and free market and pushing the economy. And I don't feel like continuing to use the same vendor on a handshake basis is, is promoting capitalistic, uh, competition.
Well, I just know it, I'm just, I'm not questioning, I'm just curious how it works, Michael. It's kind of like we get a propane contract for our house for, when we lock you, I lock you in sometimes that way. But some, you're right, sometimes that price could go down lower in the winter, so you paid more back last spring, summer, end of the summer to lock you that propane contract. So if you wouldn't have had it, you would've saved money if you bought it just month to month in the winter. But some years it goes up, so you don't know. And I know what you're saying, locking in a contract doesn't necessarily save you money, right? Then I realize that. I'm just curious how you do it, Michael, more than anything.
You know, and I guess it's, uh, convenient, because sometimes, you know, when he does his rounds, you know, not all stations or outline shops use the same amount of fuel every time, you know, it depends. There's been times where we've had rain in one part of the county, not the other, and they might have only used twenty-five percent of their tank. Well, he's still gonna make a trip out there and go ahead and top it off.
Okay.
You know, and for him, that's not much of a moneymaker for him, so.
Did we ever have our own fuel tank to carry from our, from our central location to our outline location?
It's probably been fifteen to seventeen years ago now, before my time, I think.
Were they thousand gallon tanks at the outline shops?
Yes. Yeah, we, uh, decided to eliminate doing that when we updated our fuel facility and we did not put the fuel rack offloading capabilities on it at that time.
Just as a money-saving expense for the construction of it, or?
Uh, I think a lot of it boiled down to the truck itself was, uh, needing retired. And instead of updating that truck and having a, an employee with the hazmat certifications and a person available to run that truck, because I know the, at that time, there was an additional employee that did that, you know, he did nothing but tires and fuel delivery. And that's since been a position that's been eliminated, so.
Okay, well, thanks for the explanation. I'm gonna keep us moving, we're still a little behind.
Is there any way you could get a five-minute executive session?
Yeah, we can do that. Do, do you have a statement about what it is pertaining to? And then list, list the parties so that we can make the proper motion?
Be the, the discussion with a non-elected employee, employer.
Okay, non-elected personnel, and what is the, is it a discipline issue, is it a?
An inquiry.
For inquiry to, to the board?
Yes, clarification, I guess.
Job description?
Yes.
Job, okay.
We'll, we'll do clarification of the job description.
Okay. Dawn, I moved a recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing clarification of job description. And may I say performance? That way it's not just job description, because that should be a, job description should be an open session. But if, may I just say job description and performance?
I believe that.
Because I think that pertains better, or applies. Dawn, for job description and performance pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, to discuss personal, personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
I would like myself, the three commissioners and Dawn available.
Okay, so with the county clerk, county board of commissioners and the, um, director of public works.
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Oh, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse at, um, I guess it would be twenty-nine, or is that at twenty-nine?
I have eleven thirty right now.
Okay, we'll start it at eleven thirty, okay. To eleven thirty-five. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Uh, Randy.
You guys didn't have anything else for?
Oh.
No, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Shirley Small and Mike, I guess you're here, too, for Sylvan Grove Senior Center.
Good morning, Commissioner Lou, Lohman and Wallace. We are here today in compliance with the request for a financial report for the end of the year for our senior center. It was agreed upon earlier. Uh, there's, that front page of the agenda shows it's in the packet. And, uh, we don't probably need to go through it unless you have a question for us. I don't find I'm reading any of it. I will say also that, uh, Commissioner Wallace and Commissioner Lou have been to our senior center and we invite Commissioner Lohman to come visit sometime.
I will, thanks.
We have a meeting in Potluck next Tuesday, if you're interested. Every Tu, every second Tuesday of the month.
What time?
We eat at twelve and we have a meeting at one.
Tuesday, twelve, next week?
Yes, which would be exactly the twelfth again.
The twelfth of February.
Yeah, twelfth of February.
And if, uh, Algo wants to come too, that'd be great.
Probably won't make it next Tuesday.
I'll try to.
Okay.
And if it don't work, just make a call, we can meet you anytime.
Sure.
Come in for coffee with their Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings for coffee from eight-thirty to nine-thirty.
And report, financial report is all mill levy expenses, income expenses. And it is from QuickBooks as is recommended by the auditor.
So with your net income that you have listed there, is, is that because of the?
The net income, part of that is.
That's for the year two thousand eighteen on this paper, but what it is, is retroactive income from prior years.
Right, yeah, this is calendar year.
Yeah, but this is your report for the year of what you have left in the bank.
And also, uh, one thing to keep in mind, the balance at the end, we do not have any insurance at this time, so there was no payment that's normally made in December. We're pursuing other venues of insurance. We're taking bids on insurance now, so there is no insurance expense. I think the only thing in there you'll find is a hundred dollars, a treasury bond.
So these two payments that I see, six thousand and four thousand, that equal ten thousand, that was one from the commission, because we wrote you a check for six thousand that we withheld, and then the other one kind of came from the Lincoln County Council on Aging, and that was from two thousand?
That's, that's actually two thousand eighteen.
Eighteen.
Because you guys, the commission funded the LCCA in first funding, and I think they received, you held the second funding.
I was just under the impression that we gave you the six because of two thousand eighteen, the discrepancy with the dispersment. So then the four you collected was actually from seventeen, from the council on aging.
Right.
That's my understanding from prior, is that right?
Well, I'll tell you, it's been confusing.
I know.
Because.
It's all, you're always getting paid the year after you requested the budget, I guess, I understand.
This was actually, this shows cash received this calendar year eighteen.
Which was all your income and then all your expenses, with a net balance of six thousand at the end.
That's net income. Yes. Yes.
And is this what's going into the file for this?
That'll be brought to our meeting next month. This is, those are copies for you, that's everything we put together, and, uh-
So just for Randy's sake, the, the five oh one C threes that receive public money, their requirement by the state is that they have to give a financial report annually to our county. And so that's what you're saying this fulfills for.
Right, and since you fund on a calendar year, we're actually on a fiscal, we're giving you a calendar year report. It just makes it-
That's helpful for us.
Yeah, it just makes it easier for all of us.
Right. Well, thank you, I think this is the most comprehensive explanation of finances that we've seen.
Well, Shirley and I-
QuickBooks must've been a good investment.
Well, Shirley and I put, uh, put this together in the last week, so we wanted you to have the full information from where we're at today.
And we did include our omission statement and the addition statement, like you've been requesting, so we have included that here.
And apologize for the red stripes, our printer needs to be cleaned.
So you're gonna be moving to a new building, huh?
Uh, yes. And to give you an example, uh, LaRae Senior Center has repaired a roof on their existing building and it collapsed. And that, our issue is, as it states on that last page, what's going on. And, uh, that's why we're moving. Because, uh, in the end, ours are gonna go down with the one next to us, cause they are. It's not a, it's not even a common wall, it's a shared wall, and it's not a structural wall. And the original building was one continuous building that's next to us. And there are holes in that building big enough you and I could fall through individually. And it's had nine and a half inches of rain in October and twenty-nine inches of snow already. I can't imagine what it looks like next door. I have been in our basement, and it's a shared basement, and it's called shared. All it has is a picket fence between them, and I could see white underneath the floor of the, next door. So in our fears, we needed more space, and we needed the structure that, I didn't wanna be attached to anybody anymore. I wanted us to be standalone.
Is that building pretty good condition?
Yes. It's, it's got twenty-two inch walls, limestone walls that's solid. And, uh, we have, uh, we're pursuing this architectural engineer to come in and look at it and to repurpose it for our needs. And we were crowded as it states in there. So that's what we're coming to you before today to let you know where we're at.
Requesting the rest of our two thousand eighteen funding, what we'll be receiving for two thousand nineteen.
You did turn in the budget.
Yes.
For nineteen.
Let's see, it isn't, it isn't on that.
It's not in here, but I, I know we've seen it, Randy, you probably don't have one.
No, probably not.
Well, you failed to bring that today.
It's okay, I, I'm sure we have it.
I agree, I agree, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't need it right now.
I think we need to have a little bit of discussion about what we're gonna do with the seventy-five thousand, because it looks like, uh, the, the LCCA came in and requested forty today. And so, um, we have not made any decisions on how we're going to disperse that money, and we've been withholding it. However, we do still have a rollover from eighteen, I think that needs to be dispersed personally. I would suggest that we withhold it from the LCCA dispersal, because they did not fulfill their obligations to fund the budgets of both senior centers last year. So at this time, I think, you know, we've, we've rolled over, I, I believe it was fourteen thousand five hundred, if my math is correct. Cause we, although the distribution that we gave you said, what did that just say, ten? We go, no, 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 six. So six, that's right. So we had twenty-four five, if I remember. And I think we did six and eight, didn't we?
Yeah, I think it was fourteen thousand combined, when Lincoln and Sylvan. I can't speak for him, but I think that's what it was. I think it's probably in Dawn's minutes.
Dawn, do you remember what, do you, do you have that balance at all?
No, and I don't have access to it on my computer. Um, does anybody have their December end of report?
I don't right now. I think it was six and eight.
For some reason, I was thinking it was twelve thousand five hundred. Maybe somebody else thought it was twelve thousand five hundred and I thought, and I told you it was fourteen thousand. I, I've got that written down to bring you, just.
If it was six and eight, that means we have ten five that we rolled over at the end of the year into our general account.
Fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Balance?
That's what was left, yeah, according to what this says.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be right, cause I think that time you decided to fund half of what you had between the two.
We did, we split it between those senior centers, which I think worked out wonderfully as far as funding budgets that had not been funded and dispersing that money and not giving it to an entity that held it in savings. So I think we should do that again. At this time, I move to disperse fifty percent of the withheld two thousand eighteen mill levy for senior services to the Sylvan Senior Center.
How much is that?
That would be seven thousand two hundred and fifty. And that really, that remain, the, the remainder would be the same dollar amount. And I guess if Lincoln Senior Center wants to come and request it, we're still sitting on it.
I was wondering too, for the two thousand twenty budget, when do I need to have that turned in? Last year we did May, and then they said that was way too early, so I'm just-
I'm gonna interrupt you, just because I have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Is that, uh, well, that was already earmarked for them, that's fourteen five? That we didn't spend?
Okay, motion dies for lack of second, and so we'll just continue the discussion. So the fourteen thousand five hundred that we withheld from two thousand eighteen, we never gave it to anyone. We had originally withheld twenty, it was about twenty-eight thousand. So that comes from a mill levy that we've already taxed and everyone's already paid into. It's already been collected, and, and we now have it in our general fund. But it's specific purposes for senior services. So technically, anyone who provides a senior service can request that money. Historically, one hundred percent of that money was going to the LCCA, and then the LCCA was diverting funds to both senior centers and spending about sixty percent of it on themselves. So this past year, because they had accumulated a savings account of upwards of a hundred thousand at times, we withheld that money from the LCCA. But in the meantime, the senior centers did not get one hundred percent of their funding. So we have already given some of that funding to them. My suggestion is, we do not hold on to last year's mill levy. We have to decide how we're going to disperse this year's mill levy between any and all groups that qualify for senior services. So what I'm putting on the table is that we split the remainder of what we withheld between the two entities who had been receiving it. And we have a comment.
On your split there, you were talking fifty-fifty, is that done by per capita or per usage of each senior center?
Well, there is, there's been a lot of discrepancy about that over the years. At one time, Mr. Krangle was hired to give an opinion, and he said to do it based on participation. So that was not really followed, it was attempted to be followed for a while. Um, and some of the participation that was counted toward Lincoln Senior Center was actually participation for their meals program, and that's separate, because that's funded through the state. So if you look at, if you were talking about you wanted to compare the two, the participation at Sylvan Senior Center has actually been much higher, because they don't have any state-funded activity.
In that case, I would say that, or my opinion would be that they should get more, if it's going off music.
Well, my only justification for splitting it in half directly is because that's what we did the last time. And I feel like the, both of these entities have been relying on the LCCA to get that money. And at this point, the Sylvan Senior Center is just now not in a negative balance in their account for the first time in two years, I would say.
The other thing I might say, other than participation, it's also services provided. And we got two pages of services in that sheet that we provide for seniors.
Right, I mean, at this time, we have not had any other groups come before us. And I would also justify that by the end of March, we are supposed to have tallied all our expenses from the prior year. So I think distributing last year's funding in this early part of the year clears up any prior issues, and we can start from this year forward with the two thousand nineteen budget, deciding how that money is spent. I mean, we had Judy Alders in earlier, and she said someone was requesting to get a handicap ramp. And I don't know what the qualifications are, if you have to be a group of five oh one C three, or if that is a service that can be directly funded through the LCCA. But I'm not opposed to any of that evolving into how we distribute those funds. You know, if another group, if a church co- well, I guess we don't wanna get into that debate about sponsoring religious organizations. But let's just say another group comes and says they have a service that's going to help people over the age of sixty or something like that, I don't see why that money can't be tapped into for different things. And I think the commission should be the regulator of that, because they had no responsibility prior, and that turned into a hundred thousand dollars in a savings account and a group that doesn't even have their bank statements available. Yeah. And it also turned into them hiring an employee who filed a lawsuit against seven, was it seven or nine people? Seven people she filed a lawsuit against, because she did not want to provide the information that is Open Records Act information. And that was a disaster. I mean, we, that group had hired her to provide services to the elderly, and she was in fact taking the elderly to court. It was pretty sad.
So are we, in the future then, you think we should, uh, directly then fund the Lincoln Council or the, uh, Lincoln Senior Center and the Sylvan Senior Center directly as from the commissioner's viewpoint and not through the Lincoln Council on Aging then?
I, I agree with that, that's how many other counties are set up. And I find it interesting, because the budget they just gave us today does not include their accounting for any distributions to any other parties. They're requesting forty thousand dollars just to spend on themselves. Now, they do have a few programs in here. They have home-making services, bus passes, and that's it. So out of their forty thousand request, eight thousand seven hundred, oh, the meal, what did I say? The meal, the meal to, the meal delivery, but that's, they're actually, they've been paying a board member to mileage to deliver meals, which is kind of interesting, because the whole meal program was set up so that the meals would be done at the senior center, which is the approved location through Manhattan. Not that you can't deliver them, but-
Can I make one comment? Like the bus program, that is already funded by tax dollars. And if the LCCA then also funds it, it's actually taking tax dollars and actually doubling, double funding. It just doesn't seem logical to me.
They're not, they're not funding the bus.
Well, they're not giving any tickets out then. They're not giving any tickets out.
Tickets are, because people have to pay to use the service, there is a charge.
No.
There is a charge for the service.
No, Mr. Wallace, they're purchasing twelve hundred dollars worth of bus passes through the LCCA.
That's what I said, so those people won't have to pay.
But that's what he's saying, it's already a subsidized service, so now you're buying tickets to give to someone for free when it's already subsidized, they're supposed to pay-
If those people can't afford to ride the bus, and they come to us to ask for money, would we give them money?
But how much-
Would that be a senior center, senior activity that could be funded through this?
I didn't understand that question.
What I'm saying is, if there are people out there that can't afford to pay the ten dollars or whatever it is to go to Salina to see the doctor, and they ask the L, Lincoln County Council on Aging for money to buy it, to pay their bag down there, would they, could they come to the commission and ask for money out of our pot? Would we, wouldn't we give it to them? That's a service for the elderly.
Can I ask a question on that? Would the bus refuse a county taxpayer who doesn't have the money to give them a ride?
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed to, but, but that's gonna have to be made up somewhere. Whether it's made up, made up, ma- who's, where the tax money's gonna come from, is it gonna come, it's gonna be taxed money. Are we gonna use from the elderly, or are we going to pick it out of some other pot?
My understanding of those bus tickets are so that the bus will pick up people and bring them to the senior center to eat the meal, that's what that is.
There is a fee for that, though.
Yeah, but that's what that-
So if they can't make it, if they can't afford it, is that a service that we should give to people so they can eat?
It was a way of drawing more people, when it was set up, it was a way of drawing more people into the senior center to eat, because they were having low numbers, and that was one way they thought they could bring a number up.
If there are people out there that need to eat, I will do everything I can, get them to the thing, I do not think we should criticize that.
No, I don't think so.
It's just the, the recirculation of money. We're giving it to the LCCA, the LCCA is giving it to someone so they can do something for free, that we're already spending twenty thousand dollars a year for it to produce a budget that will cover all the expenses, whether or not people can pay. And that was the whole purpose of, we, we split the funding with the state. Does everyone understand that?
I don't want it to be an issue, I just brought the point forward.
So when looking back at the amendments, they requested twelve thousand dollars, we dispersed them six thousand. So wouldn't then we just disperse six thousand, not seven thousand five hundred?
Yeah. My only, uh, comment or rebuttal to that is, we have not had the Lincoln Senior Center come to us for any requests, and we did disperse simultaneously to Sylvan and Lincoln without even a request from Lincoln. So I guess I'm just trying to split the playing field fifty-fifty between the senior centers, who have been both utilizing this money to provide services, whatever they may be. More services from Sylvan on independent activities, and the services we are paying, and when we give money to the Lincoln Senior Center, they are subsidizing the wages of the people that work for Manhattan. So we have three people employed from Manhattan, the, the woman who sits at the front desk, the cook and her assistant. Someone interrupt me if I'm wrong. And those three people are making minimum wage from the state. So Lincoln Senior Center has been using our money to pay them like an additional three dollars an hour. That way, when they work during the meals, they're subsidized to a greater extent for their income. So I do feel that that county money is being used to provide local services. The meal program namely, at the Lincoln Senior Center, and then other random activities that are regularly scheduled at Sylvan.
For some reason, I think Lincoln did come in and ask, or they sent a letter, David Ortiz.
They gave us a budget.
And in fair, fairness to them, did they know that they needed to come in and present? Did somebody encourage them to come in? No, because I think they submitted something, I just don't remember.
They gave us a budget, and it was on time, and we never approved, because we're, we had been requested fifty-five, twenty-five, and forty-something, forty-something from them, so that was greater than the seventy-five. So we did not disperse anything, nor did we make comment on how that was going to be dispersed. But yes, they brought us a budget, but they never came to us asking for anything left over from eighteen that we withheld. But if I remember correctly, I think the statement from the LCCA is they were gonna distribute seventy percent. So I'm assuming that Lincoln got their seventy percent. I don't know that, though, I haven't seen that on record. Is there somewhere else where you'd like to see the money from two thousand eighteen go? Because currently, we're holding on to it.
I guess I am no hurry to spend money when people already have, they have money to operate. I'm not sure that I think that we ought to just spend taxpayer, taxpayer money, just giving it out. You know, it's not, we don't levy tax to spend it. We levy it so we'll have to take care of our expenses, and if we have some left over, thank goodness, it rolls over and we can not tax so much the next year. You know, they didn't come in here to ask for money today. And I see they have a balance, but, and I am assured that we will probably distribute some money to you. I haven't distributed any of the money for, but I don't know that we need to go back in eighteen. Everybody seems to have survived eighteen okay without the distribution of the money. So why don't we just keep it? And, and we won't have to tax next year for so much.
Okay, so two things, you've already approved a budget for two thousand nineteen, even after withholding twenty-four thousand dollars from the prior year. Secondly, you personally, Mr. Wallace, have approved, year after year, distributing one hundred percent of those funds to the LCCA while they had a growing savings account. So I do not accept your rebuttal there to the, to my proposition to disperse the money.
That's okay, you don't have to accept it.
Can we maybe schedule like a half an hour on an agenda and invite both senior centers and the Council on Aging? And let's have discussions and maybe have them bring forth what their needs are for two thousand eighteen? And bring what their two thousand nineteen budget is.
Bring nineteen budget again.
And if we haven't, I mean, I, I can give you, make copies of what I have upstairs.
He, he has never seen one, though. He has never seen one though, so yeah.
I don't know if I want that.
And then, you know, actually have every party that's involved actually be here.
I just can't swallow the argument that we're not going to disperse funds when they had been dispersed for a decade while a savings account was growing on our taxpayer back. So to not give it out when we know that we're withholding it is interest, that's an interesting theory. It's kind of a one eighty from what was done prior. Did you have a comment, Cindy?
I think you were talking about the twenty eighteen.
Did I not say that?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's what we started on and then now it's gone to twenty nineteen instead of Sarah.
Well, no, both, both.
Twenty eighteen though is on the discussion table of whether it can be dispersed to the senior center that came there. I'd be hard pressed to say that this, that any organization of the three entities did not know that they get their monies from the county commissioners. So they've always been-
But they know, they have not always been. They only-
Welcome any group that wants to come in.
They've only been, they only distributed in September of last year. Otherwise, they were getting their money from the Council on Aging. And I don't need-
Or not getting their money from the Council on Aging.
And, and I think that probably is the Lincoln Senior Center just, to be honest with you, is probably just kind of sitting and waiting to see what happens, to know what they need to do next. I think if we called down or if we had a board member that encouraged them to come in and ask, like Sylvan has, they probably would come in and ask.
Right.
That they're also sitting on working.
It's going to come to that and read off it.
Maybe they don't have the person.
That's your opinion. That doesn't mean that's the case.
I think that that's a good idea to invite them to the table.
I mean, you can't say that they are coming in and they didn't ask and they didn't realize it.
That wasn't me making a negative remark about them not coming. I'm just saying, we went ahead and dispersed money to them without them coming. And this group has been here several times making that request. And Mr. Wallace, you made the remark that they didn't ask for money. Shirley sat here and said, we're wondering what we're going to get from what we're owed in two thousand eighteen and what's going to happen with two thousand nineteen. That is the, the topic. I mean, it's been the topic for months, so.
As far as Shirley and I with Sylvan Senior Center, we're willing to return. Another meeting if we need both senior centers to be here.
I think that'd be great to make that request and then we can talk about that.
Yeah, I could learn about this stuff better. I'm not very versed on it all yet.
I do have a question, Mr. Wallace. If you're saying that the whole purpose of taxing is so that we can take care of future expenses and that you shouldn't just hand out the money, then why did we approve seventy-five thousand dollars flat for two thousand nineteen? When we knew we had twenty-five thousand, we could have approved fifty thousand. Why didn't we do that? Why wasn't that your suggestion then? Cut the mill levy even further.
Well, you know what? When we were doing the budget in nineteen, we hadn't even dispersed the other yet. I assumed we may have dispersed all, but we didn't disperse it all because evidently there wasn't the need for it. We have seventy-five thousand. You know, we cut it back from a hundred and ten or fifteen, three or four years ago before you even got on the commission. I said, I said, this is ridiculous. We don't need this. That's too much money. The assessment had gone up so much. I said, I don't think we need that money. We cut it back. I assumed when I dispersed it to the Lincoln Council on Aging that they'd get it dispersed to the senior centers. And I fought for them to do it. In fact, I told board members to get it done, but they wouldn't follow through. I couldn't make that decision for them. But I absolutely, if they're able to function with the money they have, I don't know why we would just give them money. You are hollering at me for giving El, the Lincoln Council on Aging money. And now here you're wanting to give Sylvan money and they've got money in the bank. They just showed us that.
Sir, they have six thousand dollars in the bank, which is approximately the overhead that you were requesting in prior years.
I, I'm, I'm not saying that they don't need the money. I'm not saying they don't need the money. I'm saying that we don't have to just distribute all the money all the time. We can, we can hold money back. We've held it back in other areas.
I guess the clarification is me suggesting to give an entity money that's holding on to six thousand dollars for the rollover of the year is quite different than giving money, giving one hundred percent of the funding to an entity that had one hundred thousand dollars in the bank, which was two hundred percent of their operating budget. I mean, it's quite different and you're trying to compare the two, but-
When we became aware of it, we began to put the brakes on it.
How, how many years had you been receiving complaints from the Sylvan Senior Center before the mill levy was reduced? Which did not have a concurrent reduction that was equal to that percentage for the LCCA. They, in other words, the LCCA still received one hundred percent of the distribution, but the distribution was reduced. But how many years had you received complaints from the Sylvan Senior Center prior to that reduction of the mill levy?
I, I have no idea.
I can tell you personally, I came before you as a citizen at least three years prior to that.
I want to tell you, I have worked with the Lincoln Council on Aging, trying to get them to move forward to do something different. And I was not successful. I'll tell you right now, I was not successful. I even told one board member to her face, get it done at the next meeting, give them some money. And it didn't happen. And that's all I can do.
And Mr. Wallace, we're aware of that and we appreciate that effort.
And I've been to the Sylvan Senior Center and I've tried to get them and Lincoln to cooperate, the Council on Aging. I tried to do everything I could, but I was not successful. And so we're at this point where we're distributing now directly from the commission.
I would just like to know how many more hoops Sylvan has to jump through because we have asked for this kind of a financial breakdown that we just received in print, dollar to cent amount. I mean, how many more times do we have to ask them to prove themselves, show us, they have records of all of their activities? There's two pages of activities here that have nothing to do with anything that's state funded. They have a, I mean, I just don't understand why there's been such scrutiny over this particular group. And Dawn, this isn't a knock to Lincoln, but I haven't seen anything like this from Lincoln. Yet they've received their money from not only the Council on Aging, but as well as the last distribution from the commission, so.
Has anybody asked them to, I mean, I know you guys specifically asked them to, but I have not asked them yet because I have not sent out that, uh, treasurer's annual report yet. That's on my list to do this week.
Do they do that to you or do they not?
Well, they will now because you guys asked me to add Sylvan and Lincoln to that list. And I have not emailed them out because quite frankly, I have more important things that have to get done.
Yeah, that's not, I'm not saying that's your burden.
That's my, my task this week. And, and all I'm, all I'm saying is in fairness, have we asked them? And I don't think that we have. So that's what I, I would like to do. Um, now, I don't know what Monday's agenda looks like for next week, but the following week would be a Tuesday. That would give everybody a couple of weeks to go. Like if I just said-
President's Day is eighteen, so you're saying the nineteen.
Yes. Like say at ten thirty, is a half an hour enough? Does it need to be an hour?
I think it needs to be an hour.
Okay, so how about we just say?
Ten thirty on the nineteen?
Um, yes, and I'll move Michael back.
Please.
Okay. Oh, oh, oh.
Something different than-
Anoreus is on that day. Well, we'll just move them back.
Yeah.
I'll get them moved back to eleven thirty.
And just a note, I'm sorry, let me, I, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you for bringing that in.
I just wanted to tell Mr. Wallace, we really appreciate everything that you've done for us. And I know it's a struggle for you as much as it for us. The six thousand that's left over, that's going to be our carryover for the whole year. And so that's why we're just-
But you were able to finish two thousand eighteen in the black.
Because we had a lot of fundraising and we used that fundraising money to sustain our, our, our building and our stuff.
The other thing is we may have four thousand dollar insurance premium coming when we get it.
I understand that.
That increases it to two.
I understand that. And the money is, and we do have money that we can disperse.
I will. We're done unless you have something else for us.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
And I try to get more up on this stuff because it's a lot, a lot to digest and I, I'm not knowledgeable that much on it.
I was on the LCCA board for probably a year and a half. It was quite a struggle. And, uh, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so you guys know the dates, right?
Brandon, we're ready for you, but I have one note to make. Dawn, Doug said that he wanted this reviewed by the eighteenth, but since that's going to be the President's Day and we're not going to be till nineteen, can we please put this on next week's agenda before I forget?
Yes.
The North Central Regional Planning Commission. Sure. We'll take a five minute recess if that's our intention. It's the, it's the resolution two nineteen, twenty nineteen for us to sign for the North Central Regional Planning Commission. I just don't want to forget it for next week because we won't have another week. I'll just leave mine.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I'll have it ready.
Yep.
No, I can't wait to stop it.
Sure.
Not that I'm-
Without Dawn?
Well, if we're going to make a motion, we can start without her.
Making notes while I was thinking stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my understanding, I'm here for interview procedures and volunteer pay. Um, I did get, uh, the spreadsheet on what the full timers are paid, but there was no breakdown as to part time or volunteer on that sheet.
So does that mean we just don't have one?
That I'm aware of, yes.
That's the only resolution we have because that's what Dawn provided, so.
And it doesn't break it down into the difference between part time and volunteer.
So would you like to just revamp one of your own?
I sure can. I'll find out what the people are currently making now. I'll try to and, and, uh-
And you were going to maybe do a comparison with a county, another county or two to see?
And I've already done that on the full time wages, which is, uh, I've already done that on the, the comparison to the camp, with the other counties for the rate increase that I requested.
Oh, with the hospital, with the ambulance runs and?
Yeah, I haven't done anything on pay yet with the neighboring counties. Um, one thing I have been working on is trying to get, uh, the volunteers caught back up on some pay that they hadn't been receiving.
Yes.
I spoke with Damon Vanneta. He's going to give me a schedule. He'll all cover all the football standbys and some of the wrestling standbys.
Okay. Did they know they weren't receiving?
Some of them didn't.
They didn't even realize?
And I think that's a lot of that's because of the direct deposit. So they just, I mean-
They just worked and didn't think about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Never looked to see, yeah.
Um, so I'm working on that. Uh, I did get a phone call the other day. We will have our inspection from Kansas Board of BMS on February twelfth in the afternoon. I'm going to be doing the one in Bennington with the inspector that morning and then coming over here to the inspection in Lincoln that afternoon. So she's kind of hitting both services I work for at the same, the same day.
Are you scheduled either place?
I'm, I'm not on shift in either place right now. So that's why I set it for that day.
Oh, oh, you got to set it. Okay.
Yeah, she gave me a couple of options.
Okay.
Um, Delisa's medical billing called me the other day, or actually I called her and then she, while she had me on the phone, she asked me if we, if you guys had approved the rate increase yet. Uh, so I didn't know where you guys were right on that. I told her I'd check with you this week.
We did.
They haven't, and they've been provided the copy of that.
Okay, Delisa says, okay, okay. And this has been four or five days ago that I talked to her, so she might not have got it by then.
It would have been last Monday.
Thursday or Friday, whatever day it's working on.
Okay.
Actually, I think it was Thursday, right before the first.
Without having to go in an executive session over the previous executive sessions, was that resolved or is that taken care of?
I have relayed the information, um, kind of about what we talked about with the bill, the justifications for it. And I feel at this time, if that person still wants to discuss it, I'm going to just suggest that they come to us.
Okay.
Um, and go from there. Because you weren't even really directly involved, but you at least helped explain to us what the rationale was behind the billing. So I pass that on. If there's still a discrepancy, I feel like we need more than just me giving a third hand account. Because I'm not, you know, I wasn't there.
And if she has any questions for me, she's more than welcome to call me.
I will pass that on.
At this point, I don't feel like I, I can talk to anybody about it except for the patient. Because she was eighteen at the time, therefore it's a HIPAA violation for me to talk to anybody except the patient.
So anyone over eighteen, okay.
Yep.
All right. So he was gonna, going to gather up some information on some comparison pay rates. But his concern was that on the pay rate resolution that you gave us, it does not have volunteer, wait, what did you say, part time?
It didn't have the volunteer worth part time, right? It was just, the one that you gave me was just the full time wage, wages?
No, just volunteers wages.
Okay, I'll need to look at it again.
Uh, part time are paid in the same manner as in this full time one, but that resolution was for volunteers.
Same, same rate of pay and everything?
Yeah, but-
Okay, then maybe I have what I need already. I just didn't understand it.
We had discussed, I, when, when we were in here together, okay, so the resolution addresses the volunteer pay. And you are volunteer if you are not a county employee.
Yes, and that you're not willing to take full time at the annual shift or full shifts.
Because if you have any kind of scheduled time, you're considered part time.
Yeah.
So that does, so that resolution does address all the volunteer pay rates. But, oh, I know what it was. They, those aren't the same rankings anymore. That's what it is.
That was an issue because there's no longer EMTIs or ETI dates.
So you have to re, you have to realign one according to what the, uh, titles are by today's standards. Because that one doesn't apply anymore.
I just misunderstood what it was that we was looking at.
So probably what, what you could do is just list out each level, what their, what you assume their pay rate should be on volunteer. According, he was going to look at some surrounding areas and take into account what we, what we have as our current rate.
Right, absolutely.
And then Dawn could put it in the form of a new resolution. And then we either approve it or we amend it. That's my suggestion.
Uh, we, we've been working on inventory, got that. We had to make a large purchase, uh, through medical supplies yesterday. Uh, made an order to replace a lot of Estepa that was expiring. Just here where that's coming, it was about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
In some medical supplies. Other than that, I'm here to talk to you about interview procedures.
I had some questions on that, but first, since you brought it up, that's a good segue. On the agenda, we had noted some spending policy. Um, we need to address that, I think, by department, some spending policy issues. So if you're saying you made a twenty-five hundred dollar purchase for medical supplies, is that fairly typical and how frequent?
Um, from looking back through some of the previous purchases, it's been five, six hundred dollars a month uh, over the last couple of years that I can tell. Uh, just trying to look back through the website that we order most of the stuff through.
Okay.
Um, so this is, is above and beyond what that's been in the past. But we had a lot of things expiring going through the trucks. There was stuff that, that was still on the trucks that had been expired for quite some time.
And that's all part of your inspection, correct?
Right. It all has to be up to date.
So that's at least done annually when you know your inspection is coming.
Right.
But really, you just want to order enough so that you use it and then reorder.
We should not be using, utilizing anything on a truck that is expired on a patient. So that, I mean, what do you do with the, uh, expired? What I would like to do with it, historically, we've, we've just disposed of it properly. Uh, what I would like to do with it is what other departments I've worked for in the past have done with it is donate it to a veterinarian clinic. Because they can use it on animals that, uh, when, even when they're expired. And I understand there's a mobile vet clinic that comes through town. So I would like to hook up with them and donate all that stuff to them after it expires.
Like needles and whatnot?
Just recycle it.
Manages and stuff.
Yeah, uh, ET tubes, anything that they could use to do surgeries or anything they could use on animals that we can't use.
How long does that stuff go?
It depends on the stuff. I mean, like EpiPen, if we buy that, uh, they're usually got a year date on them and those are quite expensive.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
Then what do you do with that?
Uh, you have to dispose of the medicine and then dispose of the needles in the sharps container.
So they're like a thousand bucks a pen out there.
It's, uh, you get two pens and they're about seven hundred and ninety bucks for two pens.
And after a year they're expired, they're no good.
Legislation.
Seems like a heck of a waste, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Seems like, too bad they can't use it for something.
Yeah. And the, the, the main reason we carry the EpiPens is because the EMTs aren't able to draw up Epi like what an AEMT or a paramedic can do and administer Epi through a, a needle like what, so it's got to be an auto injector for an EMT to do it. So that's the main reason we carry it, so that they can meet their protocol.
On site, if it's right away, yeah.
If we don't have an ALS person on that truck. Um, some of the stuff like the ET tubes, they, they might have three year dates on them.
Okay.
But unfortunately, we had a lot of things that were coming due to expire.
Yes, I don't know that our spending policies are going to involve supplies that, that need to be done. That comes under contractual when you're responsible for your budget, you know? I think what our spending is, things that arise that are unusual and our capital improvements, such as a refrigerator going down or something like that, you know? I don't know that, that we need to address supplies because that's part of your department.
Well, in that case though, the resolution should actually say that any dollar amount above X with the exemption of medical supplies is how that would go. Just like Ladonna came to us and said she orders vaccinations to the tune of three thousand dollars in order.
But you're going to have a highway department that needs tubes or culverts. And they're going to buy, I mean, that, those are, those are large purchases. They're going to buy several, several of them. So I, you know.
Each department would have their own analysis. So for example, Ladonna gave us a number of a thousand dollars. She thinks that if she needs to fix something or buy something that's more than-
But that would come under her contractual.
No, she specifically said that's the dollar amount we could use for her. So I'm just getting a taste of, in the E- No, she specifically said that's the dollar amount we could use for her, so I'm just getting a taste of, in the EMS department, what is an average expense purchased?
I haven't been in this position long enough to come up with an exact, or, or an average of what it would be, so I can't answer that.
But that kind of just gives me an idea of, if you're making a large order, that would be exempt under the policy, because you need to do that at the time for supplies, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, so...
And every other department I've worked for is exactly like Mr. Wallace said, I mean, medical supplies do not count against your supervisory spending ability.
Right, and just, this commission has not been in the habit of creating policy and making resolutions, so what I'm suggesting is doing that from here forward, the way it's done is you list what your policy is, and then you have exemptions, just like when you look in the state law book, I mean, it's, this is how it goes, except in this case, and that doesn't apply, so what we would say is, okay, the EMS, you know, director may make purchases of two, twenty-five hundred dollars that do not require commission approval, with the exemption of medical supplies, with the exemption of routine payments that fall under pre-approved contracts, et cetera, et cetera. But we wouldn't want, even if it's a contract, we're not just gonna exempt all contracts, let's say you wanted to contract something out that was a regular dollar amount on a monthly basis, once we approve that contract, it's exempt from all of your, you know, approval for spending, because we're gonna see it on the accounts payable anyhow, but that contract in and of itself, the initial payment, needs to be, needs to come before the commission. So it would be, what we're talking about when we have spending policies, like Ladonna suggested, is that it's per department, so we can come up with a number for years later, but we also need to look at the relative amount that we're spending per budget.
Well, and part of this was spurred a little bit partly because, for example, David had come in about the truck repair and laid permission, but I think at the time, he had exceeded his budget, so he wasn't sure if he could really get his truck repaired.
He was asking to go above and beyond what his budget capabilities were, not necessarily above and beyond what his purchase capability was.
Yeah, 'cause I think one of the questions to David was, why were you bringing this to ask us, so I think for him, but at some point in time, I mean, we just need to figure out, what do departments really have to come in and ask for, and what do they not?
Right.
And it also has to do with bidding, the bidding process, you know, if, if you wanted to buy something, I mean, it was quite disturbing to me that we bought a one hundred and seventy thousand dollar ambulance without any other bids. We were just flat-out told there weren't any other bids available. Um, take that for what it's worth, at the time, it's done and passed in the past, but that's something to me where I would say, for that dollar amount, we need to secure other bids, even if it took another month.
And part of the reason that, that there wasn't other bids available, because that was a completed ambulance that there, that wasn't built to specification, it was, it was a demo model that you guys bought, my understanding. That's why we got it so quick, 'cause if you're look, you're looking at six months' wait on a, on a built ambulance to our specifications.
I would like to see the dollar difference in that.
'Cause I know when I priced a truck similar to that for the other services that I worked for, I was looking at two hundred, the doc, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. But that was built to my specifications.
I just think it's not a good policy that we approve that dollar amount-
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
-without some sort of comparative-
I was just explaining the reasoning why.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying, you're saying the floor model comes faster and cheaper technically, typically, so...
So where are we on this policy with him now, are we gonna do a resolution, or are you saying, uh?
Well, that's why we kinda had it on the agenda.
Right.
Um, I think we need to, by department, come up with a resolution, because what Ladonna expressed to us last week is that she feels like there's not a lot of guidance, and there aren't a lot of written details as far as, this is what you do, and this is what you always do, except in this circumstance.
It's my understanding, right now, the EMS director has the ability to spend two or two hundred and fifty dollars without prior request, is that correct?
I didn't know there was anything on the books.
No, well, we have a purchasing policy, but it was shot down by the Supreme Court that said that it was not appropriate, that the amounts was not appropriate, but I wanna say it was five hundred dollars.
But that was specifically because we were, the commission at the time was trying to apply that to other elected officials. So what I'm suggesting is we have a spending policy per department, and those are the departments that we directly oversee, which would also alleviate some of the confusion about who answers to us and who doesn't, that's kind of been a question circulating recently, you know, there's been a consolidation with the landfill and the noxious weed, and the public works, and the highway department, and who answers to us, or who is spending, or who's even creating the budgets?
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering that myself, we've had someone at the landfill who's creating the budget and, has been and still is, yet now it's falling under another-
Yeah, we were officially put it under the highway department, I mean, we put it under it, but not, I think you have to have some resolution for the public works and-
So, when you come back to us with some of your research on the volunteer pay, and what else were you gonna look into? Oh, the, when you were, you were talking, we need to, we're gonna have to approve a one-dollar amount when we set issue checks.
Of course, for the policy of the, uh, what we were just talking about, and the-
I thought maybe-
About two thousand bucks or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
That's, that's not like your supplies, like you said, you got medical supplies, that's your normal deal, but if you had a refrigerator break cost fifteen hundred, and we only give, you know, a thousand dollars spending limit, then you may as well have to come to us and say, well, can I spend over that thousand bucks?
And I think Ladonna's question was, at what point in time do we have to go get more and more bids, 'cause sometimes I'm wasting my time.
Exactly.
Right.
And spending more time than the dollar amount.
Yeah, she had a recent repair, and I forget what it was for, a window or something.
Her emergency lights.
Oh, that was the last one, yeah, yeah, she had one for a window that we originally had this discussion, and then she had another one for lighting, and it was under a thousand dollars, so she, her justification was, why would I go searching around when they could come and fix it right away, and I just pay that dollar amount, and I agree with that, but we still need to set a limit, otherwise, we get into this routine of whoever's setting the budget can just spend all their contractual or commodities liad item with whatever they personally see fit to spend it on, and that's not a good general policy.
Well, speaking from, from what little bit I do know, um, about the service and how it's ran, has been ran in the past, I do not have a problem right now with the current policy, if it's two hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, without prior approval, I mean, if I have a refrigerator go out, then we just wait until the next commissioner's meeting, I come in and ask you about it, I mean, you have a meeting every week, I don't see that being an issue. Um, as long as I'm allowed to buy medical supplies on the contractual deal, uh, without having to come in and ask, because you never know for month to month how much stuff's gonna expire, historically speaking.
Right.
But we will know that with the inventory that we're doing, that we'll know, uh, what, what we're going to be expecting to spend each, each month as we go. 'Cause I intend on making a monthly order, uh, and not letting things get out of date like they have.
Just use it as you order.
Right.
Um, off-topic, but is John Paul doing the exterior maintenance at that location? Who does that?
Somebody comes in mows from the county, I, I was in there.
Is that John Paul, okay, and how is your new cleaning schedule working?
Good, good, two hundred dollar truck, daily truck checks are going good.
Okay. So we'll see you again, thanks for waiting.
Was there something on interview procedures?
Oh, we, yes, so, I don't know that I brought this up to you guys, but I had mentioned it to Dawn, um, I was approached by a few medical professionals, mainly kind of that work in the, in the local area, and they were wondering how we were gonna go about this interview procedure for a director, because, um... Some of the, some of the concern in the past is that the hiring policies have just been kind of who you know, so if we're going to actually interview and we have a few qualified applicants, I don't mean to speak out of term, but I know for myself, I don't have medical field experience, I don't believe either of you do. So when we interview for this position, the questions that we'll be asking, the expectations that we have, it was suggested to me that maybe we have a panel who has some knowledge, or at least brief us on the questions that we need to ask, because I think that mistake has been made in the past, where we hire someone based on familiarity and, and/or what our assumption is of their abilities, and then it turns out that we didn't necessarily hone in on the exact things that we should be asking to, to verify their quality, so...
Most, most departments that I've interviewed with in the past usually use a, utilize a board, uh, which is usually like a fire chief and, and, uh, EMS personnel, uh, director.
People who have experience.
Right, um, I've seen hospital people come in on boards and send in on a board, uh, neighboring, uh, EMS directors, uh, for neighboring departments.
Okay.
Things like that, I mean, if that helps you out, I mean-
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I'm asking, and so you're verifying to me that that's not an uncommon practice, to incorporate some community members who-
No, not at all.
Would have-
That's a pretty common thing.
-that kind of knowledge, I would suggest that we do that, instead of just the board of commissioners interviewing.
The trouble you're gonna run into is, is scheduling, and, you know, where you've got your applications due by February eighth, you're gonna, you're already four days away from, from your applications being due in.
Is it the eighth?
The twenty.
Okay.
Oh, you moved it again to the twentieth, I knew it was like the twenty-fifth of January, and then it got moved to the eighth.
Well, I think we hadn't done all the advertising, so once, which, did that ever happen, did that get put on the website, the, the-
Kemp, or, uh, Kansas Board of VMS in Kemsah, I couldn't tell you, I didn't look.
Yeah, I believe it is on Kemsah, but now that I'm thinking about it, I don't know if she ever asked Hannah to add to the county's whole.
I can look for you and find out.
You do know we lost our human resource, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so that's, there's a miscommunication there, lapsing.
And the Kemsah membership was done before she left, so we do have a Kemsah membership.
And did that entail everything you wanted it to?
Yes, we got a squad membership that included twenty, twenty employees, and that provides them with ten thousand dollar life insurance each, we currently have twenty-two people on their roster, uh, three of which are already Kemsah members through Mitchell County, so-
Does that include volunteers?
That includes all the volunteers and everybody.
Does that double their la, their policy, if they're duly employed? You said through Mitchell County?
Uh, no, it does not, the ones that are, you can't be a Kemsah member from two different services.
So then we have openings on our end, because there was already prior-
There's twenty-two, uh, people on our roster, there's three people that work for Mitchell County that already have it, so there's nineteen people on our roster, so we have one spot left on our squad membership.
Okay, I see what you're saying, it was twenty total, so, okay.
And that gets us a discount on our medical supplies through boundary, and, uh, gets us discounts on, uh, any conference attendance and-
And we had to pay for last year, too, is what I think that Melissa was, is that right?
Not, not that she told me about.
Okay, I, I think she told Hannah that, I told her that she had to go back two years.
Okay.
Why?
I don't know, maybe I should question that.
'Cause we used to be a Kemsah member.
You'd think it'd be an annual renewal, and if not, you're just a new member. Although, oh, maybe we let it lapse for two years, but then they still, yeah, if they weren't giving us retroactive services, why would we need to pay retroactively?
Right.
I'll, I'll ask about that, 'cause-
Tell me on a new number, just give us a new registration number.
Just for clarification, on my end, when you're talking about an interview panel or interview board, you're just talking about for the supervisory positions, right? If somebody's hired as, as a director, they're allowed to interview their own employees, correct?
I think what the, I think what our new policy was going to be is with HR.
Okay.
Um, we need to discuss what we're going to do with that position, but I think that was, the idea is, if you-
HR's always been involved when they were doing-
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that the director's involved in the hiring process with employees, that could turn out to be better.
Yeah, yeah. No, the- Red and tash is just, you know.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Click.
Okay, so we had two items on our agenda that we have not addressed, um, we, we touched on the spending policy, but that still needs to be configured, and I'm just gonna make a note here. The health department requested a thousand dollars, which I don't see as, as a problem. He had this idea that it was already at two hundred and fifty, but we don't have anything written, and you said it was, we tried to do a blanket one of five hundred years prior.
I, I think it was five hundred, Aljo, do you remember, were you here?
No, I wasn't here, no.
You weren't here yet, I meant to pull that this morning, then I got busy working on ambulance, I will pull what the old policy was, 'cause I don't think we ever really officially is, um-
Rescinded?
Yes.
That would be great, we need to address that.
Um, and with that old policy, we had purchase orders that people had to complete, so when they wanted to order something, they had to complete the order, and if the court approved it. We've never done purchase orders in our life, but we did do that at that point in time, but like I said, once they kind of said it was not, um, was too restrictive of a policy, we just never really enforced it after that, or the board at that time never enforced it, so...
Well, I'm just gonna give a, an example of why I believe this needs to be addressed, so we have the health department that says a thousand dollars would be fine, we have EMS, we could throw five hundred dollars out as a number. Um, now we have the highway department, and I understand that their budget is the biggest portion of our entire spending, and so they're going to be spending in higher dollar amounts, however, this last January, end of the month meeting, we approved a thirty-eight thousand dollar purchase for fuel, and that was not brought before the commission, and we have some miscommunication here, because Mr. Wallace thought that we were calling around before we were making that commitment for purchase. I believe that those kind of things should have some sort of regular bidding method, whatever that may be, and you had questioned Mr. Lowman about what that process actually is. So it sounds to me like there isn't a process, yet we approved a thirty-eight thousand dollar expense, so if we had, say, like, a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar cap on a purchase, it sounds to me like the reason why it was thirty-eight is because we were not only filling the outlying that was two-
I think they had a transport, too, 'cause I don't think the outline, I think the outlines is somewhere between seven and five thousand.
And he said that's twice a month, but then to get that additional amount, it was probably also a refill at our station here, at our-
Yes, do you have that accounts payable thing?
Uh, yeah, good sir.
I'm almost thinking that some of that was at mid-month, because I swear when he picked up the check, it was something fourteen thousand.
I guess what I'm saying is a spending policy, let's put it at a fifteen thousand hypothetically for the highway department, that would bring before us every large purchase individually on a weekly basis, so that we know what expense is coming up, and we can ask those questions, did you shop around? And if they said no, that could be done before we actually approve these types of payments, and it's not a criticism, it's a suggestion, because I think a lot of times, we're giving spending leeway, I mean, imagine if, imagine if they took us to heart that we have no spending policy. Those motor graders could be already purchased, and it doesn't even come before, you know what I'm saying, it's hypothetically, now, the, what is the statute for the bidding process, it's over fifty thousand?
I believe so.
I think it's over fifty thousand, then we have to acquire bids, but you can spend and buy a lot of things for under forty, under fifty thousand dollars, that would have no bidding or choice available, technically.
Okay, so when you're, you guys are looking at this, we are giving you the, the entire month's bills.
Right.
So when you look at the home oil, we actually issued those top two out at mid-month, so on one eleven, 'cause most of the fuel bills have a, a ten-day pay period, where you have to remit payment to them within ten days, so if you look, the top two, this one eleven, so we would have paid twenty thousand in mid-month, and then another the difference than at the end of the month, so your AP, even though you guys were seeing the entire, 'cause you're seeing the entire month, you're not just seeing what we paid at AP. So when you're thinking of that consideration, you know, you have to-
Well, what it looks like is, these four thousand, two thousand, five thousand, he, someone went around and filled two or two tanks that week, or whatever, so that's what they- and the fifteen thousand was probably an outlying shop and their main, I don't know what type of certain-
You got a fifteen thousand and eleven, so those are the two big ones.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's, and I wasn't, this is, it's kinda tough for Michael to, because those prices do fluctuate, and he could, you know, you could have him bid once a month, maybe, to say CBA and then his home oil, and, you know, there maybe ain't that much diff, I was just curious, what I thought was, since we spend, like, there's thirty-eight thousand, how often is it? How much do we spend a year of fuel, do we know approximately, a hundred thousand dollar or more?
No, the budget, oh, what was the budget, that, it has to be more than I thought, if that was a thirty-eight.
I don't have access.
Well, well, anyway, obviously, we spent quite a bit, and I'm thinking if we go to a CBA and say, hey, we're gonna spend a hundred grand this year, or two hundred grand, whatever it is, can you give us a five percent break on that, and he says, maybe we can't do that, he says, you know, I don't, and I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying if we're gonna spend a bunch of money, maybe somebody could have given us five percent break, and that'd be, what, ten grand, maybe, and that's all I was curious about, now maybe that doesn't work that way, I don't know.
Several years ago, they would contract with you, but now they won't contract with you, because the market is fluctuating so quickly.
So radically.
Yes, so, like, they, they did, 'cause I wanna say that they had, we had contracted for a price, and then the price went down, and so we were just buying it off of, and not on the contract price.
And that happens, and I'm not, I was just questioning, I'm not criticizing either, I'm just, and I'm Michael, so there, you know, that fuel goes up and down, it's true, we know that, and, uh, maybe it's, what he's doing is-
Now, you don't see it here as much as you see it in Salina, or even like where Brittany lives at in McPherson, it is quite a bit cheaper in McPherson than it is in Salina. It's amazing watching it, but here, they pretty much, like, stays stagnant, because it's what they're dropping into at the, at the time, that they're dropping the fuel.
Yeah, and that's fine, it's just- Yeah, and that's fine. It's just, I was curious about it. Maybe there's nothing on this fuel you can do.
Um, I'm just not sure. Some of those are probably outlying shops. Some of them are probably, when I say transport, I mean it's coming into the bulk facility. So it's, it's filling in.
Well, that's what I meant too.
That's what we used to have.
Which is here in town, right?
Yeah.
That's their main, do you know how big that tank is?
Oh, gosh, I, there's three of, three tanks, isn't there?
Yeah.
Or at least two. There's a diesel one unloaded. So, and, and then I think they just basically fill when they know that they're getting low. They call and say, what's the pricing? But, you know, whether they're calling everybody, I don't, I don't know, but.
I thought they used to, maybe they don't anymore.
I just, I know CBA wasn't interested the last time, if I remember right, in giving the fuel contract price.
The bidder and price.
And I know Martin wasn't. He said he just couldn't.
I talked to Wesel Bannon this weekend, and I talked to him a little about that. I said, would you bid us? And he said, call him, maybe they would.
Well, and CVA, CVA has taken over, cause I think the last time we tried, it was farmway co-op, so maybe CVA is big enough that they could.
Well, Wes is, he's a manager or hire up, and he said, at least ask for a quote or bid, maybe wouldn't hurt anything. If they don't, I don't know. It's just, I was just trying to save us some money, if possible.
And I know, like, some of the departments, they get upset because the price on the fuel tank, or the price out at Mighty Martin, Meyer right now is cheaper than what they're paying through the highway department, and that's because the highway department is buying it in, in quantity. And at the time, they're getting a good price, but then if the market is going down.
So I have a question. The outlying shops, are those, do they have two tanks for diesel and their regular? Or do they have to bring their trucks here to get the unloaded for gas?
I think they only have diesel, but I would.
I think so, I think I've only seen one tank in Sylvan. So then, so then that means they bring their truck, their highway department truck to town to fill at the location here. So have we ever considered just doing a fleet card so that we can allow them to purchase from the local vendors?
We have, we have a card, so Sylvan Fire purchases from, um.
Valcoms?
Yes, and they have a card system that they have to use for that.
Right.
Um, I believe that Beverly Fire has been purchasing from CNS, and they just.
Where's that?
Tesco. And I think it's cause they're four miles from it compared to twelve miles. Um, Beverly, I'm not sure what they're doing for the fire department side, but I'm as, I'm assuming somebody's hauling fuel to them. We probably pay the bill, and I just don't pay enough attention to it. But, um, Hunter Rule Fire is getting it through CBA, and they have a card that they have to swipe each time. So, I mean, we have cards, but, um, we just normally, anybody that's here that's close enough gets from bulk fuel facility. And that's where we've told them that they need to get gas, and that's where the health department gets.
I guess I'm just saying, if we're not going to be trying to contract at all, or call around at all, then you're still paying that day's price. And like you said, if right now it's cheaper at Mighty Mart, the, if you used a fleet card, you go through there today. And otherwise, we're buying it in bulk for it to sit in the tank, for everyone in the outlying areas to drive in here to get it from our internal purchasing.
The biggest problem that I have, just speaking from a standpoint of that, is the credit card situation and having enough cards for everybody. Cause you have law enforcement who needs to have twenty-four acts, twenty-four hour access. Where Mighty Mart didn't offer them the convenience, or Meyer Tire didn't offer them the convenience, bathroom service. Uh, and then you have the responsibility of what if those cards get stolen, and it just becomes a nightmare.
Right.
Then they had for a while where they had a card that they would, one card that they would check out, but then somebody would forget to bring it back. And it just got to be, I don't know, frustrating.
There are quite a few people to have that many.
The other problem, if you give them a card, you don't know what they're filling up.
Well, do people, I mean, how do they come and get the fuel here?
They have a key, uh, key pass and a key that.
Yeah, it's, it's restricted. You can't go out there and get it.
If you had a card, you gotta, you could take your personal car. You had, you had a county car, you could take your personal car to Meyer Tire and sell it up, and how would anybody know? And they wouldn't. Not to, hopefully, we don't have people doing that, but that's, that could be a.
No, but that's, that's, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, exactly.
You have no checks and balances.
Right, no control over that. But on this, I should ask Mike about that. I don't, I didn't, I was just curious if we could save money on the bulk delivery, but maybe not, I don't know either. Cause it maybe varies so much on the price, it isn't worth it.
You know, when I was managing Mighty Mart, we had Wolters Oil. I think Wolters Oil is out of business now, cause that was a mom and pop. And the bigger places are taking over the mom and pops. But you had a ten thousand gallon transport that come in, and I had at the time two tanks, so I would have to determine how much. But they wanted you to get purchased the entire ten thousand gallons. So, like, I would really have to let my tanks run dry to be able to get ten thousand gallons between the two when we were dumping.
Then you're cutting it close with delivery time and.
And I'm not sure what size and that the highway department has, but that used to be what the policy was. And then it, it, when I first started with Mighty Mart, um, it was owned partially by the same place that owned Mighty, uh, Quit, or Quickway. So then we were able to split a transport, but then once they kind of split their ways, they weren't allowed to split anymore. So I don't know if that's even an option to, to split with another business, those transports. But they don't, and then there's a fee to get them here. I think that's why most of the gas stations locally are going through the CBA, cause then they dump and they're responsible for refilling. They put meters on the tanks and they know, and they just come and start dumping.
Right.
Tell them what price they're gonna put on the thing, allows them to price fix, but.
To me, it's not a criticism as much as it is a question of promotion of, you know, spreading out our expenditures. If, if someone had a business in town that we were getting contract with, I mean, I don't know what the markup is on fuel. But I'm just saying, to know that you're going to get routine business from the county is a pretty secure business deal. And if we're, if we're not going to at least reach out for bid type question pricing, you know, that kind of thing, then we're, I mean, it's, it's, the word is cronyism, is, that's the word. And so I'm trying to avoid that, and I'm trying to avoid it even looking like that. So when we have someone saying they're not calling around for prices, and, oh, it's a convenience, to me, that doesn't ring good bells with the taxpayers justifying where their money is being spent. You're shaking your head, Howard. Does that resonate to you?
Well, yeah, that's different. We, you know, as a farm, we've gone different places, and right now, currently, we're going with Bob's, Bob's Inc. out of Downs. Gives Far the better price than anyplace else. But there, you have to have a contract, you gotta pay so much money down before you ever get any fuel. And then he, he contracts on the futures market, uh, up there. But he's, he's picking up quite a few bigger customers around.
But you get your money back off of what you paid down, and that's used towards your.
Yeah, but you, but he's got that amount of money to use before you get the fuel.
Yeah.
And so I don't know how many of them do that, but that's what he does. It's a.
It moves so fa- it's moving so, it moves so fast and so often anymore. It's, it's just, the markets are just, you just never know. I mean, you know, today, we may be out of diesel, and we have to have diesel, and it's up five cents, when it'll be down ten cents next week. But what are you gonna, you can't wait that long, you know? You've gotta have it, you know, so. I, I just don't know that there's any way to beat the darn system anymore.
Right, that's right.
I mean, that's, that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to beat the system, and everybody's trying, and nobody's winning.
Yeah, years ago, you could contract.
Oh, yeah.
Because the price would be really pretty stable, and you'd contract, maybe save five percent, and hell, if we're getting a hundred thousand dollars, save, uh, five thousand, ten thousand dollars, that'd be good. But now, you just, Aljo, just put it in the capsule. It goes up and down and up and down, it's so volatile that you can't contract like that.
And you got winter grade involved too, because if you've been in, up around the Great Lakes or something, you didn't want any regular diesel, you'd be stuck.
Yeah, right.
Well, you probably would around here a couple of days, wouldn't you? We had that happen. I never again will I do that.
Well, I, I can tell you, when I managed Mighty Mart, our markup was ten cents a gallon. That's what, that, that I was supposed to mark up when the government transport load, calculate what it is, and it would be ten cents a gallon. And, you know, you didn't see the fluctuation in pricing that you see now, where, what my understanding is, is that these vendors that have CBA are, are paying, they'd get five cents a gallon. But CBA is taking the market risk, and that's why the pump is fluctuating like it is. Now, when I bought it, you, you kept your price where it was at based upon the transport. And then if somebody got a lower transport, and your price was still ten cents higher, you still had to make the ten cents. You still had to make your money on it, so you weren't able to lower your price. So that's kind of where it's at. But I think with CBA, they have the ability to fluctuate with the market more so than a private person has if they were doing it on their own. And that's probably why they only give them five cents a gallon rather than the ten cents, is because then they're using the other five cents to fluctuate with the market. Fuel, you don't make money on the fuel. You make money on the people coming inside your door buying your product.
Yeah.
That's what I, so one, one thing I learned working in the convenience store.
But there is stability in knowing that you do either have a contract or a loyal customer. And I just don't see the county as serving to be a loyal customer. That's not our purpose. I would say that, I would venture to say that all government entities should refrain from having such relationships with vendors. It, it's, you know, it's public money, therefore it needs to be scrutinized as you go, piece by piece. Uh, now, signing a contract is different because you're still, you're trying to get the best deal, and I understand we might not be able to do that with fuel. But it's just an example for me to say why I think the spending policy has to, it ha- it has to show somewhere that we're making an effort to gather those bids, to shop around, not to just, I mean, I find it interesting. We had someone come in here today who's about to work for the company that he brought us the bid from, and there were no competitive bids. It's, you know, it is what it is.
But it was local, wasn't it? It was a local company.
I'm not against local.
Yeah, you know, you know, no, no, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, and who else local is, can do that work? You know?
I understand.
So, you know, you know, I.
And I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for it, but there's nothing to, to compare to.
That's right. But it's been that way for quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
It's about one. Are we gonna, are we doing anything else?
We need to decide what we're going to do with human resource position. Oh, Cindy would like to address the board. Let's just, maybe we can.
Way back at the beginning of time, when was, what?
I'm not that old, Cindy, but I know you are.
Thank you. You're a close second, if you know it. I went back through all of the minutes, and again, this just reiterates how important it is for any organization to do correct minutes. And this is when Charlene Watson came on, so her term is up in twenty nineteen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
In twenty nineteen.
In, yeah, the end of twenty nineteen. And I know Judy Alvers doesn't apparently want to do it, but according to the minutes, she filled a term that ended in twenty sixteen. Then twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, she was there, so twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, she could still be there, but apparently.
She thinks she ended in seventy.
So, so whatever it is, but that is, again, you know, how careful when you send out letters and stuff, that, that it has to match whatever the organization says.
Wait a minute, so what are you pointing out to us?
This is Charlene Watson.
And that's who?
Because that was in the paper, that it was, that you approved her till twenty twenty.
Oh, so, oh.
And she only goes to twenty nineteen.
Okay, so then, so what you're saying is.
I mean, you need another letter for her. She, her term started at that, and that's the minutes that prove that.
It was in the middle of its term. So what you're saying is we have two backwards. We have Judy Alvers and Watson backwards now. Now that we corrected.
Well, Judy, I don't know. I asked her.
She said she was replacing Sandy Adams.
Cause I was at the meeting, as was Mona, when she did say, uh, that she was on till twenty twenty.
But she.
And, you know, so whatever.
What she said, she realizes that she was replacing Sandy Adams until the end of seventeen. So now it should be eighteen and nineteen.
But it was actually twelve twenty sixteen. So twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
She hasn't been on there since sixteen now.
Do you know that too?
Oh, yes, they, she hasn't been on there since sixteen.
No, Judy hasn't.
Yeah.
Judy started November of twenty sixteen, just to replace Sandy. And then they moved for, and I guess I don't know what happened with that. That's, there's a lot of things that happened in twenty sixteen at the council of aging. Prior to, I mean, I guess there was mediation, except one of the minutes said that they paid Ann Zimmerman for medications, but, and that may have been true. I don't know anymore. I'm just saying how important it is for your minutes to reflect what goes on. Uh, you were asking about some things about Sylvan, and I've been doing a lot of research on that, and I probably should have brought it up when they were here. Because I found the, what Harry Wirth and Audrey Mueller wrote for their mission statement. And some of the things that how Sylvan Senior Center was started are just, they're wonderful. They're absolutely wonderful. Their, their mission statement was that they felt that the purpose of the organization is to provide a senior center for the senior citizens of the Sylvan Grove community and surrounding areas who are sixty years of age and older. To communicate with agencies and organizations working with older persons, to support proposals and projects felt most important for the aging population in the community, that there will be no dues, only free will donations to take care of our expenses like utilities. We do this so that no one will feel excluded, because they do not have the money for this. It was kind of moving to see that in a, in a kind of organization to make that statement. And they did have two loans to buy that building. They bought it from a man named Speary, S.P.E.R.R.Y. And they mortgaged, they mortgaged it later on, but they paid nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dol- well, it was five thousand two hundred and some odd dollars that they ended up paying. They borrowed nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars grant from the, uh, eighteen county agency on aging. And actually, it was Julie that signed the, uh, that's the CEO, signed the, uh, agreement for, for purchasing it. And then they also had a, a grant from USDA for forty-five hundred and a loan from USDA for fifteen hundred. And with that, they purchased that building, they renovated that building, they put new bathrooms in, they did a lot of things with it. And the monies they budgeted so well, that is my point of this, because you apparently got a budget today that you said was, looked very good. At that time, they budgeted so well that they were only a dollar and fifty-six cents over. Just saying. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Okay? I hope I'm not back next week. All right.
I think if, since Judy wa- wanted her term to expire.
Well, she has, she should probably wait and resign. Isn't that what you kind of suggested?
Yes, that's what I said.
Cause let, maybe a year comes here and she's like being president and thinks it needs to be more.
I would suggest that she just let her resign.
Right.
So we leave it as we printed it, except.
For Charlene should not go to twenty twenty. Hers is twenty sixteen, otherwise she'll be six years.
I think she, I think she, uh, I think that's what was her understanding, isn't it?
That was her understanding.
Is that she's gonna be off in December.
Right, it was. And she had, because of illnesses, she had put a resignation in, and then she decided that she owed them that year. But whatever.
Okay, so moving the discussion on to the HR position, I think that we need to start over with the advertising. And Dawn, it's my assumption that you're in agreement to take on the payroll aspect, and we've already made the motion to pay you for your time that you're gonna put into that. Do we need to do that monthly? Probably.
Um, you guys approved last month, so probably. And my intention was only to charge the extra hours, but, you know, you had asked on the phone the other day about what I had spent time-wise. I didn't really think about, I spent all of my day time, hours working on it too. So what I'm going to do for you guys, so you guys can see what, how many hours that actually takes for payroll, is to just do a separate time card that is actual time on payroll.
That'd be excellent. Yes, cause then we have an idea of what to expect.
Kind of have an idea, yeah.
Because, you know, we say two and a half days, and when we really are spending a lot more than two and a half days.
So, I think two things that we need to do as a commission before hiring this position again is, number one, have an integration plan where we expect them to do payroll for certain departments, you know, the second month after they learn it the first month. And not give all, that was Aljo's suggestion earlier, it was your old suggestion, was, um, you know, not do all of the payroll at once, which I agree with. So we integrate them into taking on those responsibilities. That should be a plan. I would say maybe over the process of four months, to give one month at a time to add on a, a department or two. And the most time-consuming ones at this point are the sheriff's department and EMS, and hopefully by then, because they have part-time, overtime volunteer. I think by then, we can have our universal time cards in place. That way, whoever's learning the new time card system only has to learn one and not calculate. That way, whoever's learning the new time card system only has to learn one and not calculate six different sheets. The other thing is, I think we need to give a little more clarification on the job description. Dawn and I came up with what we think would be daily tasks versus weekly versus monthly for this position. And that was something that was not clarified to the last person who took on this job. That person did not know what was expected to be done and the frequency. And I think that would really help someone coming in that's new.
What, Dawn, was, now you're gonna do payroll for just a short term or for, for the foreseeable future, or what? If we get a new HR person, you're gonna turn that over to them then in the future, or what?
Yes, that's what I would like to see happen, otherwise you can't really justify it being a full-time job if they're not doing it.
Right, I was saying that, I was wondering about that.
And so I'm okay with transitioning. I, but I'd like to see clear, or I'd like to have you guys have clear deadlines of what you would like transitioning to occur. So then that way, if they're not meeting their deadlines, then we need to figure out what's going on and why they are not. Which I would be okay with the transition over a four-year, or a four-month, or a six-month.
Four or six-month timeframe?
Yes.
And then...
Add on a month for hiring now.
Would this person then kind of be working under Dawn, or be separate by herself, or himself?
It would be a department under the commission.
That's where I'm gonna disagree. I, I do, I think you've got to be part of the, a part of the deal, Dawn. Not only do I think you need to be in on the interviews, county clerk needs control of that payroll person to some extent. I don't think they can not answer to you.
Okay, so I'm gonna interject that she is an elected official.
I know, I know that, I know that.
And if you put a department under her...
I'm not putting a depart- I'm not putting another department under. I'm just saying, she's wanting to give up the payroll, and I think the payroll needs to stay, supervision needs to stay with the county clerk. Because I think you have, you're in the position that you know what's going on, and you're the one that can supervise her. I can't. I'll be right up. I don't think anybody on this board can do anything with payroll, but you could.
Yeah, you can.
Because you're the county clerk.
You gotta have some direct input and control over, at least for the six months, right?
Oh, yes, but he's talking about extended...
Well, long-term, if the person would work out six months, then you can let her go, or him go. And then you could maybe be, if they're competent, be on your own. But we, we don't want another situation we just had here in the last two, three months, right?
Right. And maybe how we work this out is so, so I, and I struggle with how to get what I'm thinking in my head out of my mouth. But I just feel like HR really should be, employees really should be yours as this responsibility. Because right now, what it is, is, well, Dawn Harlow said this, and Dawn Harlow said that, and...
And I agree with you with that part.
Okay. So maybe what, so let me give you an example of what Deborah used to do. So we double-check and triple-check everything, and maybe ridiculously so. But like the quarterly reports, when she got done preparing the quarterly reports, she would give them to me, and I would re-verify the information, double-check her for accuracy, and then I would sign off on it. Maybe there's some things that we could still do.
From what you showed me about the process, the double-check that is completely unnecessary is the fact that it's not uniform. So the, the amount of time it takes to perform the double-check could be shrunken to a fraction if you had a uniform system. So we need to look into time clocks, at least for certain areas, locations, or whatever. That completely automates the check for their time as far as the daily check to the weekly check, okay? So, for example, the double and triple checks happen because the supervisor is checking the employee's handwritten entrance and math. Then the payroll person who is calculating all of that is double-checking the math of the supervisor. And even the supervisor has made mistakes on the employee, so there's a triple check. Then Dawn was taking the payroll person's math and double-checking it, and, and also looking for exemptions, like what happens when they're overtime, or, for example, the Sheriff's Department doesn't even start overtime till 43 hours. So that needs to be checked, that the 43 is added, not the 40, before you start paying hourly overtime. So it's almost a quadruple check, because then when you input it into the system, you're still asking the system to check your math and looking at their pay rate and seeing if that dollar amount is correct. I think that can very much be consolidated by using a little bit of technology and uniformity. Every department has a different time card, and that's just...
Now, I did talk to Comtech, and Riley County is the only county that has a time clock system that, that still has our, their payroll. And he said, we do have counties that have different payroll systems. So that could be an option. And, and he said, we've, you know, figured out how to get it integrated into the bookkeeping system. However, he did give me the company's name and a contact number to call them that Riley County works with. And it was his understanding that they have all different types of, so if you have a smartphone, you can click on, you can, you know, go to the app and, and log on your time on your smartphone, different things like that. So I have some questions for Riley County, and he told me who to contact, and also the company name. But I do think that although, you know, I sit there in the back of my mind and say, oh, how unfair this is, that we would maybe expediate the process for somebody, and that's not fair. I also know that we waste a lot of our time because we are, in a sense, backdated in that standpoint. The handwritten time card is, is a time of the past, to be honest with you. And we would speed processes up. You know, after doing payroll and thinking about it again, let's say if we did increase payroll, say we paid twice a month, you're gonna be doing payroll twice then. So, so the time is still going to be twice the time to process payroll. And I was, you know, thinking, oh, well, that would be easier. And it really, honestly, it would be easier for recruitment, but to, time-wise, once a month payroll is, is what we... But if we had a time clock system that sped that process up, it might not actually take that much more time. It's just learning to use it.
Well, and to, to full disclosure, some of the people, at least one person who has approached me about increased frequency of pay has now kind of changed their tune. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily what the employees want. It's something I've been approached with last year, and I've not brought it up until it seemed like this is an applicable time with a new HR person, yada, yada. So maybe we do just need to poll them and find out where everyone is. Because it's really not, it doesn't affect us, it affects their paycheck and their budgeting system that they're on.
Well, I think, I think first we, we need to figure out how to get this process, this going. And then we can go to, if we want to.
Yeah, we can always increase it, yeah.
We can, that, that's something to be done way in the future. We've gotta get this problem solved now.
Yes. But I will say that regardless of having a universal time card, they need to be turned in on time. And that has been an issue. And it's an issue with, you know, I, I will defend LaDonna's argument that he or she did her evaluations, which is gonna be another hangup. Now we have merit raises hinging on evaluations that we have no one to go through because we don't have an HR person. And I don't think that should be Dawn's job. So we are in a little bit of a hiccup as far as that process goes.
Well, and you guys were at lunch, but Brandon had made some comment about what if we would move the end date up, you know, a long time ago, and I think this is probably pre to you. But when I first started here, we paid through the 31st, or whatever the last working day of the month was. So it would cause everybody to have to estimate their time. Then we moved it to the 25th. Maybe what we really should do is move it to the 20th, where a person has more days to process and catch those errors. Because you were trying to cram so much in.
But like, and what I don't understand is, who is not filling out a time card that they can't turn it in on a Friday or Monday? That's a problem.
Well, what, where the problem lands at is when we ask, so the, the time periods, for example, ended on this Friday. So everybody, we actually asked everybody to have their time cards into us on the 24th. So, but some people don't like not, they, they think if they get paid through the 25th, they shouldn't have to turn it in. But our problem is, we have to have everything to the bank on the 29th. So in order...
It's a working day to do it.
Yes. So that, so that's where the biggest hangup is.
But what I've seen of the time cards, I'm just gonna use the Highway Department as an example. They only go by the week. So if your one week is done, why can it not be handed in? It's like handing in your homework.
They do, they turn theirs in.
But do you get it every week?
Um, we get the majority of the employees that are, are turning in a minute. Most of the time, we get every employee except for the outlying shops. And it used to be that they went and picked those time cards up, but they don't. Now, now, I will tell you, in September, October, or November, I questioned why we didn't have their shop people's time cards, because we should have their shop people.
In towns, you mean, here, yeah.
Anybody that's here in town, there is no reason why we shouldn't have. So i- in, yes, in a realm, I, I wouldn't be honest if I said we get 100% of their time cards weekly, but I would say that we probably at least get 50% of them weekly. But I still don't know why the outlying shops can't get theirs in, they're, they come to town.
Well, and if we're not gonna change it, if it's gonna stay once, once a month, you could even be requesting them on the 15th, and then again at the end of the pay period. You know, that, whatever you said, if you wanna move it up a couple days, or... It doesn't, I guess it doesn't have to be weekly if you're not gonna be inputting data weekly. But it should be more than just, even, I mean, I know like the Health Department, they don't have a lot of employees, and they probably turn them in on time. But if you had half of the month done before you received the other half of the month, if this is your full-time job, then you can spend three hours on it one morning, and that first two weeks is done. And when you're recalculating your math for the entrance into the payroll program, you don't have to redo the first two weeks' worth of numbers, you're only doing the second two weeks' worth of numbers. That's where I was coming from on the frequency.
And I can understand that too. Now, I, I can tell you, I won't have time.
Well, no, you've been used to doing all your work, and then those last three days, just blocking them out and doing all that math at once. If you have a full-time job, doing that, it doesn't need to be done in a block scheduling like that. It can be spread out so that you have time to make phone calls and do other things.
Very true.
So what do you say we should do about HR director, put it out up?
I think so, we'll start over, and then I wanna get pricing on what it would cost to go to a time clock system in between. And I know that everybody is probably going to be against it. If you're against it, this is my philosophy, if you're against it, it's because you have something to hide.
I agree, I agree.
Why would I be against it? That's simple, I, I just was at the post office doing it here a month ago. That's the way it goes. You don't like it, you don't get paid, you know?
Yeah. So I just, it's, it's just gonna be a hurdle. We will have employees, some employees that don't have smartphones, we'll probably have to address, is there a, a problem with us requiring it to be installed on their smartphone? Some of the employees have tablets, you know, that are in the motor grader, so those motor grader people can, they could, we can upload that and...
Well, some people are suggesting that. Like now with all our smartphones and stuff, you can almost record your time online and email it to you guys, right?
Yes.
Electronically, electronically, all, all is there in online.
And I don't know what this particular program is, but like my son was telling me, he struggled when he went to North Dakota right away. And he was like, Mom, Next Tech, the phone is not working. And what, what they were required to do was check in on their phone. And at, at three different times a day, they were required, the beginning of the day, they were required to do a picture of their job site and upload it. In the middle of the day, I think he said equipment, and then the third part of the project, or... At, at some point in time, they had certain requirements. Well, his picture's more uploaded because they couldn't connect to an internet. And so like, they were okay, and once he got in, then he could put it on Wi-Fi, and, and it would upload and everything. Now, do we need to be that specific? But the question is, is how do you know that they're at work, if they're checking in on their smartphone? So maybe that, it's not such a bad idea. They have to take, take a picture of the building that they're walking into.
And they got GPS on them, you could do a GPS tracker to see exactly where their location is. The post office had that on a scanner. They could track exactly where we're driving out in the country anytime, our boss could. Because they're on that scanner as a GPS tracker. So if you're stopped for 10 minutes, they wanna know how come you stopped for 10 minutes at this place out in the middle where there ain't no farmhouse. Stuff like that, you know? I don't know if we wanna do that, that could be a little intrusive maybe, but they have the technology now to do that.
Our road graders have those, yeah.
Yeah, GPS, you can see right now.
So does our spray.
We could get, get a software app, you could pull up, and you can right now see where our motor graders are, if they're moving or not, or parked under the trees sleeping or something.
So it's just, it's just a matter of figuring out what will work for us. I, I think I'd like to start with what I know will work with the, the system. And then also, you know, he told me to put in a request for, or send him an email, and I just didn't get it done on Friday. But if they, if I send them an email, they'll let me know what counties use our payroll system and what counties don't. I think there's only seven of us, so, and the ones that don't, we can call and see, what are you using? Are you using a time clock system?
Does that increase our Comtech expense then, to have that kind of adaption, or?
It will, we have, it's already out there in our program. But he said there will be a small fee for it, but he said that will be a nominal fee.
It'll probably be less than getting new software for a whole separate payroll system.
They've gotta actuate what you already have.
Yeah.
Get it working.
Right.
So we should put it out in the paper then for an HR director, you think?
Yes.
Is that the next procedure here?
Do you still want it to be full-time, is the question?
Well, this is, I wanted to make a comment. You know, you have been in the practice, or your office has been in the practice, of dedicating three whole days to payroll. And I don't know what kind of hours, I mean, we're gonna find out hour-wise what that actually means. But, you know, a numeric justification is the fact that if you can contract out someone to do payroll for three days of the month, that is not a full-time position. So if you're going to add on the responsibilities of HR, which would be dealing with all the employee files and much more coordinating through evaluations and job descriptions, updating the handbook, all of these things that I do think need done, then it should be a combined position. But I don't think we can throw all of that on someone at once. If we weren't going to emphasize that, then there's no justification for the full-time. And previously, when we had voted on this, I did not vote to have it be full-time because I didn't see someone doing all of that. I can now advocate and say, if the person's going to do all of those things, it's a full-time position.
Plus payroll in it.
Yes, payroll incorporated in the job.
Eventually. Uh, uh, like we talked before.
We just have a, a transition created.
We're gonna have to have a transition. Yeah, we're, you're gonna have to help them, because there's a lot to do with the payroll. You know, but over six months, hopefully they can get it done.
And I think that what, what I struggle with is, is it's not that it's hard, it's just that you have to... It's not that it's hard, but you have to be able to, to sit down and manage your time. And so the person that you hire needs to be able to sit down and manage their time. And I will tell you, I'm getting worse older that I get at that, and I need to start doing some calendars myself because payroll backfilled me last month. And, but partly because I had so many other things, and then I wasn't really sure what was actually gonna happen, and then... But, and we were trying to get W2s done, and it just, it, it kinda accumulated. But if you get a person that has good time management skills, they will be able to do this, they really will. They'll be able to do both, and they'll be able to, they'll be right policies, and they'll be able to train.
Something that we did, that the commission failed to do to support that last position when we created it, is we failed to impress upon that person how important it is to be a self-starter, to be self-motivated, and to be an ideal person. That person needs to bring us ideas, and we accept them and promote them, or we shoot them down. But I think what we did was, we gave the impression that that person was waiting on our every next command.
Want to be instructed.
Yes, and that isn't really what we're looking for, because the commission only works, only works, only comes together once a week. And we can't have someone who their boss shows up once a week waiting for us to instruct them.
I think that's what my point is, that the county clerk has to have some kind of control in this. I don't know how that, how we do that, for sure, but they have got to respond to Dawn.
So I'm gonna say this, if we could contract someone out for three days a week to pour eight hours a day into payroll and do nothing but finish that task in her office once a month, then we find someone who's willing to work that way. And then for the HR position, you only need a part-time person that shows up three days a week and keeps tab of the files and the employee files.
I guess I would wonder if you could ever find a person that'd wanna deal with HR on a part-time basis. I mean, that, it's a headache, it's a headache, to be right on all the laws.
I see where the, the offices, you know, combine, and, you know, I, I'll be honest with you. I was struggling in December because I felt like I was re-teaching her because nothing was, there was no notes taken whatsoever. So then it came to crunch time because the health insurance bill through the state of Kansas, you know, comes out on the 24th to 25th of month. This month, it was the 24th. I didn't realize it. But in December, I think it came out on the 26th. So we had very few days to calculate everybody's health insurance premiums. So I was doing that part of the job for her, which technically should have, should have been, but yet, you know... I, I don't know, I, I think there will be a combination of both, and I really need to be able to figure out how to get what's in my head, head out into my voice, but...
One of the other differences... One of the other differences with the way that we process our payroll. You know, we, we were hiring someone out of a corporate setting that had a software system that did a lot of the pre-calculations. And the time clock system that already had inputted information. So then we were asking someone who was used to that environment to hand calculate, hand input. And then separately pay our calculated portions of our state and federal portion of our tax, our employment tax. That is a, is a different setup and I think that was clearly explained and you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, it was all electronically done for her before and now manually doing it, right?
Exactly, exactly. Which takes time to learn and implement, especially if you don't know the reasoning and the logic behind it, which I don't think people know when they're just. Introduced to a software program and this is file, you know, tab A and B and just input information from these papers into that file tab. It's different than knowing, you know, Dawn, you've gone through the whole process, you know why and how it's calculated and the nuts and bolts of it. That's not something someone can learn in a short period of time, even if they've been familiar with HR, unfortunately. We've automated so many things at this point and that we are using an antiquated system. And my biggest complaint, again, is the, is the fact that we have so many different time cards. The math there, I mean, you're, you're, you're literally calculating each individual employee's quarter or half hour time to match it.
Yeah, and, and then you throw in, the law enforcement has, if they call you out, you get paid two hours automatically. Regardless of if you're out a half an hour, fifteen minutes or three hours.
You mean if you're on call?
No, like if they, let's say, they have. Let's just say they have a DUI and they need another officer to assist. They call an officer out to come out and assist. There, they guarantee them two hours of time regardless.
But is that person already scheduled or are they just?
Okay, so it's like on call. Somebody that's not, so it's an on-call situation.
I get it.
What his, his way to encourage his officers to come out is to pay them a minimum of two hours.
Yeah.
The thing is with that, is if they haven't worked their number of hours, the two hours can be regular time. Or what they actually work could be overtime, but the rest of it be, you know, regular time. Because you don't have to pay them if they didn't work. So if, let's say it's a half an hour that they were actually out. Then it could be just a half an hour that's overtime and the rest of it is regular time because they didn't physically work, if that makes sense. And so it just, it throws in a whole nother realm and we'll have to figure out that on a time clock system, but I'm, I'm confident that we can. Because what, you know, I'm trying to impress upon them is I just want you to record what you worked, what you worked and then when we get to.
Let me figure out how many hours you did until you start getting overtime pay or vacation pay or whatever.
Yes, and, and so that's what I'm, and I'm not sure when the time card started to go away. Besides when they started to try to use Excel and get Excel to calculate their time for them. And then it's, it's telling them and, but then that's only as good as the operator that knows how to use Excel.
But what it looks like to me right now is we have the health department and the sheriff's office. Having their people come in and clock in, in some sort of spreadsheet format is what it looks like, you know, on this end. So if that's the case, then they should have no problem transferring that from whichever computer they're, you know. Timing themselves, clocking in, clocking out to whatever, whatever other mechanism we use. And so we're just, basically the highway department's gonna be the biggest issue as far as coordinating clock, time clocking and anything.
And they may just not have, I mean, they still may have their paper time card where they're tracking what they're doing and where they're working at. And they just have a time clock system where they're clocking in and out, you know, 'cause I don't really care about that and that's what I've tried to tell them. Just bring the time cards up and we'll send it back when we're done with them.
Right.
Um, because I, I get it that, that they do so much more tracking to figure out miles and.
Where they've been and on what project.
Um, but we don't care about that. We care about the start time, the end time. If they were not working, then they're on leave time.
Right.
So, but, I, so I will run an ad.
Yes.
Lincoln Sentinel, Lucas. I'm assuming, um, Salina. And.
What was the, what was the?
There was an HR website that we had it on before, but I swear that one's going away at some point in time.
Next tech?
Next tech, yeah.
Next tech.
Next tech, we probably could.
The other one is that indeed.com, I've heard a lot. I've heard a lot of things about that, just, it's nationwide, of course, you'd have to find our location or put in our location, but.
I'm kinda wondering if they don't pick up from newspaper.
Really?
Cause I've, I've searched different.
And they have things listed?
Yes, okay, maybe when I get really frustrated with my job, I go ahead and search and see what's available.
Hey, you have experience and calculating HR.
You can pick by city and yeah, some of it looks like, like maybe they're picking up off of websites somehow, but I will look into that.
I just know that's one, Indeed and Monster are still pretty, I think that one's still pretty big.
Full-time, full-time job with benefits, right?
That is what we budgeted for.
Yeah, sounds good. Probably go with the theory of Dawn be the mentor for six months and hopefully go from there, right Dawn? Is that cool?
Yes.
I think. What you're also hoping for and what I'm suggesting is that they take on those HR responsibilities and control of the employee files immediately. Because we want someone that has at least that type of experience. And the payroll portion of it, as Mr. Wallace suggested, is that.
She can assess.
They learn for a month or two, then the next month they take on one or two departments, maybe your more regular departments. And then not give them EMS and sheriff's office until the last month where they've gotten all the other departments figured out. Because those are the two tricky ones with calculating and knowing all the exemptions and exceptions for their rules, so. And I do think we need to mandate that this person goes to FMLA and FSLA and all of those acronym type training scenarios. In some sort of HR seminar soon, soon after, within thirty days of employment, they need to do some.
Hopefully they'll know that when they get hired there, huh?
Well, we were hoping that last time, but if we don't express those kinds of expectations, it doesn't get done.
Yeah, hopefully they'll.
I think like the question is, is explain to me what you think family medical leave is and have them explain it to you and then.
Right.
Explain what parameters and standards is because you're gonna know then whether or not.
They know it or not.
Yes, at what level do they know it?
Right.
Do they know it as an employee or do they know it as a, because they've actually worked with it? Um, but I'll, I'll come up with a couple of things and I, I don't know why I didn't think about that beforehand, but I. Partly because I haven't had to work with it for so long, I.
So are you willing to take these applications then for us and at least file them so we can assess them? And what kind of timeframe do we need to look at? Because we are in the first week of February. I would say we need at least a month. To have the outreach and be able to collect, put together resumes and. Applications. Do we wanna set a deadline?
I would say until the job is filled.
Okay. Accepting.
You might get a bunch of applicants that you don't want and you have start over.
Okay, so Dawn, if you would put in the ad, accepting applications until the job position is filled? And they can remit them to your office? And it's full-time with benefits package?
Should we have any requirements, like education requirements or anything like that?
I would say prior experience.
Preferred.
Yeah. Bachelor's degree in HR. Master's degree in HR.
Dawn has one of those, I think, so it's just not on paper. How about?
Yeah, I could, half of me can't go to colleges, they can't give me a degree for all of my experience.
For work experience. Some colleges will give you some of that, a little bit.
How about HR experience expected? I, I think the preferred part is maybe the education, because we may get someone who's been in HR that's not formally educated. But I don't think we can hire someone who doesn't have any HR experience. That's not what we're looking for.
And we won't be able to pay enough money for the.
For highly educated.
Highly big time.
Right, exactly, we've experienced that. Does that make sense? If we say they, they have to have worked in HR, but if their degree is not in HR, that's just preferred. It's not, that's not gonna determine the job.
Associates, bachelors, preferred, whatever.
HR experience required, HR education preferred.
Yeah, something like that.
We may have someone who's forty-five and never gone to college, but worked in HR for fifteen years.
Yeah, that'd be very good. What, we gotta dress this stuff or blow it off till next week?
No, I think we should just do it because they wanted to disperse money. This is the, these are the approved applications through the web fund. From this quarter, they do it quarterly and we have. The RAS program, which is where they do a match funding between either an employer or the state. And then our portion for that student to repay on student loans. So that's fifteen hundred dollars for the RAS program.
Per year.
Per year?
For five years.
For four, oh, it's five?
Yeah, for five.
Okay, excuse me, for five years, thank you. Okay, and then. Full funding to the Bud Finch Memorial Community Theater for the requested amount of five thousand toward their total project. For eight thousand and change to do, is it a reprogramming or a purchase of a new server?
Purchase.
A purchase of a new server for their movie, for, to show their movies, their down, their uploads or downloads of movies, how do they do that? Approved for, oh, this is the student. Approved the total project cost of two thousand dollars for the Lincoln Arts and Humanities Organization. Because they want to put on a, what do they call that? An exhibit of local artists. Nine hundred and ninety dollars to the Sylvan Senior Center for a follow-up on a prior request. Um, they were getting a projector and screen for their facility. And then two thousand six hundred one dollars and sixty-one cents to Vesper Community Men's Club. Which was tables and chairs. Is that all of them? I think that's it. Doesn't seem like enough money. I think it was fourteen thousand something total.
I move, we approve the web fund request.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
None oppose? Oh, there's the breakdown, okay.
I just have one other thing that I almost forgot about, but. The refrigerator in the break room is actually owned by the extension district and since they're moving out, they would like to know. Whether or not we would like to buy it from them or if we would like to buy our own and they'll take this one. Um, but if you recall, probably, I don't know, Kathy Nielsen, maybe Aljo, you might have been here. But Kathy Nielsen had gotten some kind of a grant to put their food in it, so like when they do their projects. But Elisa really has no idea what to even ask for it, if we wanted to buy it outright from them. Um, but they're gonna have to buy one to replace it.
Are they interested in taking it?
They will take it if we want to get rid of it, but then we'll have to buy it. I'm assuming we want to buy one, but maybe we don't, I don't know. Well, people put their lunches in.
That's the kinda stuff that I have unfortunately been spending time looking at in my new profession. And you can get some really good deals. So I say let them take it and we'll get our own. That way we don't cross-funding, just let them have it. And we'll find something, they're easy to come by, I promise you that. I see them on my feed constantly.
I was gonna say, that would be my next question is if I find one on the viceal tray, do you want me to?
Yes.
Grab it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you sign it?
No, I don't think so. We're just approving the payments and they, they send them.
Okay, so I will tell them to take it and we will find something.
Okay.
Okay. I think that was it.
There is no further business to come before the board today.
What's gonna happen to the room down here, is there a memory of?
Well, I've kinda proposed that they turn that into the commotion meeting room. Because I think it's, it's wider like this, but it's thinner.
And then you could leave these tables up. A lot of times when they have bigger meetings in here, they need to extend them this way. And not that that makes a difference, but we could have our own separate room. I kind of came across the idea that maybe we should be keeping some of our own files, like to pull out and particularly pertaining to the budget. I feel like it's an inconvenience when someone comes in and talks about the budget or their, their budget request. We could have our own filing cabinet that has at least the current and prior year's budgets, the requests and then what we're working with. Because it's a lot of paperwork for one of us to haul back and forth. I mean, I have a whole bin of files and Dawn, I know you're inundated with filing.
Well, and I struggle leaving the meeting because then I feel like I missed something and then I don't know where I've missed that, so.
I feel like if we just had a nice two drawer filing cabinet, the wide ones, we could have all of the current years. At least the budget information is what I'm getting at. Sometimes some of this stuff gets lost from week to week as far as the documents that are brought to us by individual groups. And that, that'd be hard to file, I know you keep all of that. But just like today, I mean, Sylvan Senior Center came, they've already given us a budget, we don't have it in front of us. So you can't really, you know, talk about it. We can't pull out the LCCA's prior budget because now they're applying for, or they're. Re-submitting a new one, you know, I feel like that may be, that may be who's the commission to have that information at our disposal.
Well, you know, with the old desk, you guys were able to have a drawer that had some stuff.
At least store some information, yeah, the board information, the expir- expiring terms of the board and that kinda stuff.
That was my, gonna be my suggestion and partly because too, I felt like if it was wider, then you could have rows of chairs. And it wouldn't feel like everybody was stacked on top of each other. I don't know how you guys feel, but it gets very claustrophobic if there gets to be enough people to fill the chairs. But, um, I don't, I don't know.
Are they gone yet? Are they out yet?
I think they are, I mean, they still have a few things.
Okay.
They were moving on Friday.
And they were moving this morning.
Okay.
So, um, maybe I can put that on the agenda for us to decide.
I think we still need to have, well, we didn't do the evaluation policy today, but that is kind of on a, at a standstill. We do need to work with our new HR person in developing that, so it doesn't all fall on you to do the legwork. That's a lot of typing, searching, changing, editing, same thing with the handbook and that's what we need this HR person to actually do. So I would say we could.
Well, what I can do too is ask the other counties to send what they have for evaluation policies. And then maybe what I could do is once I accumulate some of them, put them on a flash drive for each of you. If you guys all have computers at home and. Pick and choose what you like, but yeah, if we need to, but I think too, you guys need to plan out time of when you're going to evaluate the department heads. So, but that process we could go ahead and do.
But if we're, we were requesting by the end of the quarter for evaluations to come in, so we really need to start looking at those. I mean, we have one department done we can be looking at, that's gonna fall on us. We can't expect a brand-new employee to do all of that. Before we decide to administer merit raises, so.
So how.
Could you start putting weekly on the agenda an evaluation time slot? And I think it needs to be a half an hour.
And then.
Because we're gonna have to do some of that in executive session.
And. And when I do that, are you wanting to start the evaluation yourself and then maybe ask the department head at some point in time? Or what, what is your idea?
Let's do this as an example, since the health department we know is done, we can look at their evaluations for their employees and. Make our own scale of what we're going to do as far as a dispersment. Then after we've looked and seen how the, how the evaluations were done, that is going to factor in how we do our own evaluation on the department head. Do you see what I'm saying?
Got it.
I mean, I would say the fact that that department head had them done in a timely manner has a huge impact on how we then. Report on our evaluation of that department head.
Okay, so when do you want to start that?
I think we can do the health departments right away.
Okay, like next Monday? Okay, and we'll schedule a half an hour?
Have you heard anything about health, Lake and Park matter, any news or anything?
I have not. I would like us to draft a letter as a commission and send it to some of our representatives. I believe that we need to reach out, not as, just individuals, but as an entity.
Cause like a lot of impatient people are asking me all the time.
Right.
And I say we're in the process of dealing with it, but it's slow.
Right, and there's not a lot to disclose because everything that we're talking about has to do with numbers. And these numbers are under the protection of.
Right.
Client privilege with the attorneys and the person who owns it. Client privilege with the attorneys and the person who owns it.
I will tell you, somebody called the office and they would not tell Hannah who they were, but they want to start a campaign where everybody starts calling you guys. And they wanted to know why you didn't answer the phone, why you as board didn't answer the phone, and she said, because it rings in our office when they're not here.
Oh, they called the county commissioner line?
Yes.
Okay.
And so they said to her, the gist of the conversation incurred with, well, we want these people to, everybody to be able to start calling in, so then they guessed that they would go ahead and put your guys' personal cellphones in the newspaper, and, so I'm assuming they're gonna do a letter to the editor, and they claimed that they had all of your guys' personal cellphones, whoever this person was, but they wouldn't tell us her name, and we don't have caller IDs, so I have no idea who it could possibly be. But I don't know what else to tell people, I mean, we can't, we can't make you guys come every day and sit to answer a phone call.
On that note, I had another request recently to do an evening meeting. Now, this is something that I had talked about quite a bit when I first got in office, and I kind of let that idea go after a while because it was not being supported, but I do think that is a perfect indicator of why we need to do something like that, and I'm not gonna say it should be every Monday, but maybe we need to do the last Monday of the month, an evening meeting, because a lot of the working taxpayers are not gonna take a day off of work to come here and wait for their turn to sit in on our commission meeting, but they want to be heard. And I'll write back to the paper and say, you know, if you have concerns that you'd like to personally address, please come to the meeting, and I often hear, well, I can't come to a meeting at ten o'clock on a Monday. So, I think we need to initiate having at least once a month, evening meetings, and Dawn, I know that's inconvenient because you put in an eight-hour day here, so I don't know, as an elected official, I'm sure you can do your own comp time, but you never know how many hours this is going to be.
The, the hard time with me is asking department heads to pay them overtime and to come to a meeting. You know, if, they wouldn't have to necessarily come and record on that meeting, they could come on a different day, it just would be about.
Did we already talk about having them come at the end of the month, or what did we say?
Couldn't we have a county commission meeting, just not with a regular agenda, with the department heads like we had today, but just a meeting to address the public, period?
Yeah, but are you gonna do that at ten o'clock on a working day?
No, on a evening.
Yes, yeah, but I'm saying she has to come because we have to record.
Yeah, and, and not.
I mean, technically, do you, is that the statute that you have to do, I mean, one of us could actually take them.
I think technically I do have to, that, that whenever you guys are in session, either I do it or I appoint somebody, but I don't mind as long as it's not an every, every week thing.
No, but what if it was once a month?
Well, once every two, three months, maybe, but like now, we got this Lincoln Park Manor issue, obviously it's a big deal, and the public doesn't know what's going on, and I think we should do some type of, I know we don't really have a lot to say, maybe, but they're wanting to know what's going on, and I don't, I don't know what we can tell them necessarily, but if we could have maybe something just to say, we're working on it, I guess.
Well, there are a lot of, there are a lot of people that are interested, I mean, I've held a town hall every year for three years, and this last year we had over a hundred people, so there is interest in all of the issues, but a lot of people, they don't wanna come and sit through a meeting, they don't want their name recorded, or they don't want, you know, there are some reasons why they won't come, but if we at least make it available in an evening, if they don't wanna come, that's on them, then, it's not like we're actually holding it in a place and time when they cannot, I mean, they'll just have to make arrangements to come in an evening, so. I would suggest we do it once a month to get through the issue of Lincoln Park Manor, because I do feel, I mean, I've said this several times, I said it in our committee on, on Lincoln Park Manor, and I've said it here, we haven't made a press release, we haven't communicated to the public what our intentions are or where we are in the process, and while we can't disclose the numbers, we certainly can talk about what the issue is, the hangup on the licensing, we can talk about what our hopes for the future are for that facility, or what the financial impact may end up being, if someone is to tell us, if you're gonna fund this at all costs, then we need to talk about what that means. You know, right now, we have two million going out to our highway department, we have almost a half a million going to our EMS, and, and same thing for our sheriff's department, are we going, and we had a hundred and twenty thousand allocated to that facility every year, are we gonna bump that up to five hundred thousand? I mean, is that something people are looking at, because these people that say that you have to fund it no matter what, that's the kind of repercussion we have to discuss, if that's, you know, a long-term investment.
Well.
I think you would be better off to have a joint meeting for that purpose only. I think if you go to a general meeting, I think we could hung up on a lot of other issues, but I think if you have, if we do a public meeting like we have in the past on Lincoln Park Manor, that that would be something that would be discussed, and it would take, certainly, it's gonna take some time, cause there's people going to be asking questions, but as to have a formal meeting, it's just like today, we were to be out here at one o'clock, we haven't even done all the agenda and it's now quarter two. You know, so I think that's part of the problem, we get, we get hung up on a lot of things that I'm not sure need to be done in a public night meeting, I mean, some of the things that we have on our agenda, but I think we can have special, if you wanna have a special meeting for Lincoln Park Manor, which is probably, needs to be done, since we have been unable to, to reach a, an agreement quickly, but I think that, that I would think that's, and that is not really, when we have those meetings at night, those need to be for special purposes, I guess is what I'm saying, specific purposes.
Didn't we fall into the trap of having a Lincoln Park Manor meeting where we had irate members of the employment and certain residents saying that we needed to support this purchase and this new tenant at all costs, and here we are, having made that decision after we were trapped into a meeting where I, you know, we had people standing up at the back of the room, you need to support this, and they acted as if the transition from one owner to the next was the act of support, which we did, I voted against it, and here we are, dealing with that owner that everyone was supporting at that time, because it was the quick fix where you have one meeting to discuss it, this needs to be a recurring issue where things come out over time so that you can talk about the different scenarios, I mean, you can't sit down and say, we're gonna have a three-hour meeting on Lincoln Park Manor, it's as people need to roll in the door and express their concerns, I'm quite concerned that we've had so many people quit their jobs out there that are local residents and they have not come to us and told us anything. That, to me, that means they can't, they feel that they can't approach the board, yet they want us to financially support it. I'm a little confused about that.
That's what I think you would express in a public meeting.
My, my question would be is how would we set up the agenda, would we just have, you know, certain topics that would be discussed and like maybe say, will a lot, an hour for the nursing home, an hour for the road system, since those seem to be the two top, hot topics, and then maybe a half an hour for all other subjects? Or, that's.
To put a constraint on it.
Yeah, so that, maybe that way you could have like an end point and then.
Right.
But I would need to know how to do the agenda part of it.
Right.
But I do, I, I didn't like the very last working day of the month, just because of the effect of the vendor, but I, I don't think the last Monday of the month would be bad, because then you wouldn't be hitting all the city councils and the school boards, you would be missing that.
That's the first Monday, right?
I think so.
Most of them.
And school is second?
Oh.
Or the second, no, the second.
The, the, the third Monday of the month, no, the fourth Monday of the month is a good time because they, I think most of the meetings are already taken place.
Okay.
I wanna say the schools are the first Mondays and the cities are the second.
Okay.
And then just how we would structure the agenda to figure out how, you know, would people need to get on the agenda in order to speak, because that's normally, that's normally what is happening now.
Or you take from the audience and you do a three-minute, we actually have a timer and we do, you have three minutes, anyone from the audience that wants to address, until we use up our hour on, you know, and we can reply or have discussion, but then that's pretty much limiting their time until we use up our hour for the topic. I mean, I, that's how they do it at seminars, you know, they put up a, a microphone in the middle of the aisle and then you can come and line up and ask your question at the microphone and get your response, and then you're on your way. I mean, what if we tried to do that for six months, you know, through the middle of the summer and see where it gets us with some of this discussion? We can say things like, we wanna support the nursing home at all costs, but do, don't we wanna hear from the public where that cost ends? I mean, there has to be some sort of.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta be realistic on price, on, on everything, you know, yeah. And we're, you know, where we're at here is I got a, not much movement happening, to my opinion, of course, I know it's a very complex issue.
But we could also have the conversation, okay, you all have been paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Do we double that? Do we triple that? Are you going to be okay with that doubling or tripling exponentially over the next ten years? I mean, we have to have some of those talks and considerations before we commit to doing that, because it's gonna affect the next commission, not just us.
Oh, yeah.
Whoever's here again, I mean, so therefore, the public should have a lot of say in that, not just the three people that are gonna spend the money initially. It's a long-term investment if you do it that way, and if we're gonna take on all the burden.
Well, right, like, I, I kinda agree with Aljo, right, the first thing, in the near future, we should maybe have, if we're gonna do some evening things, should maybe be concentrating on the Lincoln Park Manor issue though, I don't know if we wanna call that an open meeting, or just a specialized meeting, dealing with that issue only, that's kinda run that.
I'm not opposed to having special meetings that are totally related.
Once in a while, and I think we gotta get, this is an issue where we should, we should at least have a press release or something, saying what we're doing and where we're going, you know? I don't know if we could do a press release, we could do a meeting one night, have a town hall, Lincoln Park Manor, here's where we're at and what we're doing, and that, you know, I don't know if that would work, help anything or what, but.
Well, the, the request that I, that was brought to me was just, are you going to try to do evening meetings ever, you know, cause you talked about that, I talked about that last year and, and more the year before. I'm open to that, I'm open to that regularly, because I think it provides a better venue to involve more people.
I think it'd be okay, but the issue which you guys brought up before, are you gonna require the department heads to be here for them?
No, no.
We talked, wrote, no? Okay, there you go, well, that's just it, then you, cause you, if you're requiring any of them be here, then they're gonna pay overtime, or what are you gonna do with that? That's the issue, I was, but otherwise, we'd be fine, it'd be once a month, I would be against it.
So I have a question in the, in this. Would you prohibit a county employee from coming to the commission on an evening meeting to discuss things that they as citizens have issues with?
No, in fact, I would encourage that.
Because I have been told by several employees that they have personal issues with things that are happening in the county.
Probably in other departments.
But actually, yeah, but, but they have been told that they cannot show up to a commission meeting to make complaints about something that's happening in the county, because they are county employees, and that just seems wrong to me, because they're also citizens, so if you have an evening meeting, would you prohibit a county employee from coming, let's say, sub-部门, and they're having problems with the roads that they're driving on?
They are not prohibited from coming at this time too.
They, they believe there's.
Well, they're not, cause it's an open meeting.
But they're also unpaid time.
But it's during the day, they're on the payroll.
I just told them that they need to take their time off.
They need to take their time off, cause they're not working for the county.
But see, I don't agree with that, I mean, that's, that's like saying any citizen that wants to come before the board that they elected has to pay to do so, we're already getting paid, I mean, they're having to use their own personal time off, which is dollars in time, I mean, everybody's time is worth something, and I don't feel like we get paid to sit here to tell other people that they have to give up their pay to come here, I mean, we've been fortunate enough to have a bit of an audience who are self-employed and can afford the time and, you know, the interaction, and I appreciate that, I think more heads in the room, the better, and, and you can get worried about how out of control that gets at any point in time, but if you're allowing all the decisions to be made by the board when no one else is present, that's how you get into trouble.
One issue with yours, talking about the employee, as long as they, if they came and complained about their immediate boss or department head, then, then that would be not a good issue, yeah, well, that would have to be understood there, yeah, but if, yeah, if they're working for the health department, they're worried about the gravel road out here, I don't see no issue with that, that's just a citizen had an issue with their road, but if it got to personnel work relationships within their own deal, then it, well.
Yeah, that, that's what the issue is.
Well, just as long as that's understood.
Yeah. But an evening meeting would solve that, because then everyone would be equal, the only people on payroll at that point would be the three of you and Dawn. Everybody else would be coming.
Well, when they're off work, when they're off work, yeah, well, that's, sure, well, that's, I don't see the reason why not.
So, my question to, to the board is, do we want to preemptively address something like this with a statement, or do we want to just hold a meeting and wait for the questions to come to us? Because if you're talking specifically about Lincoln Park Manor.
I think Randy's right, we probably need to issue a press release, that needs to be written out and, and published in the paper, and then I think we will see what the reaction is, you know, and I think, you know, it's a matter of, what we're dealing with is, number one, the license, as, you know, we're dealing with that, that's a complicated issue, the other thing is, how much are you willing to spend? How much is this county willing to spend? You know, I mean, that's got to be, you know, and we can, there's no problem, no problem saying, it looks like it's gonna make costs from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand to sustain this nursing home in the near future.
Maybe we just need to offer to sell and have an auctioneer there.
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's a possibility, Howard, I don't think there's much support out there for that from what I hear, but I don't hear people wanting to give five hundred thousand either.
Right.
Yeah, we're.
There's a magic number, so.
You know, people got to know that it's gonna cost money.
Or call, a lot of people, or close the doors, a lot of people don't wanna close the doors, but if we're gonna keep the doors open, it's gonna cost a lot of money, so what do you do? There you go.
Would you rather have a hospital for five hundred thousand, or would you rather have a nursing home for five hundred thousand?
That's a good.
Or would you, do you not want any?
Well, maybe you could do a little bit of both, you do the press release that has that information, and then you'd say, and then you say, and we would encourage you to come to whatever date it is, meeting, to voice your opinions, or write us, or maybe a combination of both, cause it almost sounds like you're posing a question, do you want it to close down?
No, I, I don't think we put that in the press release, I think what we put in the press release is, we've been working with a, a special attorney that we've hired, we've been working with an auditor that we've hired, to come up with some numbers and some ideas of how the future of the nursing home is going to look under the ownership of Lincoln County. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't think we necessarily throw those numbers out until we get to the meeting and say, what are we discussing here? Because we're talking about doubling to tripling the subsidy that you've already been paying, where's that money gonna come from? How do you expect that to affect your personal taxes, or, you know, and I've had this thrown at me, so don't preemptively judge, but it's like, so we're going to spend maybe upwards of three hundred thousand dollars for the thirty people that live there? I mean, that's thirty people in the county that we're taking care of with hundreds of thousands of dollars, do we afford other groups of thirty people that same? No, there's the argument that we're supporting employees and we're supporting other people here because it's their family member there, et cetera, et cetera, but you can make that argument round and round and round, I'm just saying, how much funding do we allocate for that particular group of people who are really receiving the benefit of being in that facility? It's very complicated.
Saying to you, the daily census of the hospital is like far less than that.
Lower than the thirty?
And we're paying five hundred thousand.
That's a good, and, and, and that's a good point?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Right.
That's, that's the.
So really, it comes down to the employment of both facilities, if you're gonna compare apples to apples.
Economically, return do we get for this, you know? I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, let's say if, if you applied the subsidy strictly to the payroll, just hypothetically saying where your money's directly going, I haven't seen the payroll at the hospital, I assume it's substantially more than the nursing home, but I wonder what percentage? If we're, if we're now spending a hundred and twenty on a million-dollar payroll, are we spending five hundred thousand on, I don't know what kind of payroll is up there?
Hospital?
Yeah, you don't know, do you, yet?
I don't, we had them numbers, but I don't remember.
Do you see what I'm saying, though? Like, what portion of each entity's payroll are we subsidizing if we were to apply it just that way?
Well, the hospital, on average, employees will pay more.
Right.
More nurses, audience, doctors, all, you know?
Yeah.
Or you have less of those at the nursing home.
You wanna write a thing up?
I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to.
Cause you're the one that probably knows more about.
Yeah, and you're.
Yeah, and I can update the, the.
Maybe we could add it later. Maybe we could edit it later and take, cut half of it.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
No, no, that'd be good, I think, yeah.
That's fine.
I think we should do something. That way then at least we're telling the public, here we are, this is where we're at. That way they can kinda calm down a little bit because they don't know a lot except what they hear downtown and half of that may be wrong, half right, who knows, right? So this, at least we gotta give them something, I think. And then maybe have an evening meeting and discuss it more later.
Right, so do you, are you saying you want to do a special meeting just dedicated to that topic?
I think so, I think so.
Well, and I think that needs to be part of it though.
After your press release.
Well, let's do it as part of it.
You may say in it that there will be, you know, and hopefully within 30 days we'll know a little bit more. Yes, we're gonna be forced to know something.
Well, I'm saying, are we gonna, are we gonna put it in the paper twice then? Are we gonna say, look for upcoming date? Or are we just gonna say, hey, we're gonna do it on February 1?
I would, you know, I wouldn't put a date.
I wouldn't put a date yet for a meeting, but you could put a press release out first and say we will have a later meeting or something.
Okay.
Don't you think that's good? Well, I do because.
When we have final things to tell you. I guess, you know, you might qualify, but it will be up to us once we have some finalization of how we're going to do this or.
Yeah.
It's already a done deal and now we're just gonna like.
No, no, I don't mean that.
We're all with the school bond.
I think, I think you're, you're telling them, we don't know, we don't have a clue what we can do. Hopefully we'll have a couple options available, but I don't know.
Yeah, I agree, definitely should do that.
Well, it all comes down to money. I mean, that's our only control, is the money. So I think we can just let them know that obviously we'll be talking about the subsidy that it may or may not require and what the public opinion is of those numbers. And like you said, you had a great point. We are subsidizing other entities and you talk about what that means. And some people don't even know that that's where the money goes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, let her.
Which is interesting on the school issue, it ended up here in our lap too, didn't it? And we paid it, funded it.
Except, except if it hadn't been a pilot, that money would have gone to those schools anyway, through taxes. Yes, it would have if it hadn't been.
Not nearly that much.
Actually, do the math, the math is actually correct. You are incorrect, Mr. Wallace, do the math.
Are there any other issues to come before the board today? Thank you for staying and amending the agenda as we go. I will adjourn the meeting until next Monday, February 11th at 10:00 a.m. In this room, the basement meeting room of the courthouse.